It does.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need help? Oh, yeah, turn the phone on.
Entertain a motion for you to accept the agenda as may be amended.
So move, but I would like to be number eight municipal resolution for additional planning grant to be put on hold until Lisa, our town planner, could come in. She had a private meeting.
She's at another meeting right now.
I believe the hub was opening up down in Rutland today, so she's kind of for that. So when she gets here, we can move to that.
And we don't have, we didn't get minutes for this meeting, so we can just delete that.
Is the link posted?
Yes.
Okay. Some from Juniper is having trouble getting it. Where do they find it? It's on the town site?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the calendar.
Which person?
Because I can send it to them if they need to.
Can you send Susanna an invite? You could probably do it right from here, right?
Yeah.
Anything else as far as changes?
No, she can come in later, so.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye. And there we did wipe out approval of the meeting minutes because Chet said we did.
Yeah, we have to table them because they aren't here.
I just sent that to Susanna.
Okay. Thanks. You got a couple more people looking to come in. You might keep on watching that.
This is Susanna.
Over to you, follow up.
I'm out.
Pay attention.
There's Susanna.
Select board member concerns?
Nothing that's on the list right now.
This is not serious, but it's something that was brought to me about someone using their own name on the town sign and why does someone get to put their name on it welcoming?
So that's a great question.
Announcing that he's back in town.
That's a great question. Ronzoni is a local person that is.
No, we understand why we said he could put him up because he sits across the road from it.
No, he doesn't sit across the road from it.
He's not at the vacation center, I mean, the welcome center?
He's at the welcome center, but the letters are at the town hall.
Yeah.
Okay? And Ronzoni volunteers to put the letters up and he puts it up. So when there's nothing big on at the time, okay, I give him what he can say. And I put, Ronzoni says, let the beast begin exclamation point. He is changing it because I think the resort is going to announce Wednesday that the World Cup is on and then it will just say the town, whatever, welcome, and I believe it's heroic Killington Cup this year, and then the dates. And I have spoken with, even though the resort does not own the sign, I have spoken with the resort, they're fine with it as long as it's not Ronzoni says to the big groups or whatever. But we do have times that the, there's something not really going on in town and for a person that's volunteering two or three hours a week to put the sign up, so he gets a little recognition that he's the one that's putting the sign up.
I'm just pressing the button.
You know, so, you know, if anybody else wants to commit themselves to 52 weeks a year of going out in the snow and playing around in the cold, you know, just let me know your name and I'll add your name so you get a little recognition. I think that's what the town wants is recognizing some of the volunteers that we have in town.
Okay.
So.
Between the people that are here and anybody that zoomed in, if you have something you would like to bring up that's not already on the agenda, could you let us know by unmeeting yourself or raising your hand?
Somebody else go first if they want.
No.
No one's obvious.
Okay. I had an opportunity to read through the contract, the development agreement, and I want to compliment you. It's a well-written, well-designed agreement, and I think the.
Should we, should we have his name as a disclaimer?
They know a district.
It's Art Maladsky.
No, I know it is.
Yes.
But he didn't say.
I got it.
Is a good way to cover the risk, which, you know, as you all know, I've been obviously concerned about as you have too. So I think it's a good, good concept. I did have a couple of questions if you don't mind my asking.
So Art, if you could just say your name, I know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But there's other people that may not know.
All right, Art Maladsky.
Okay. And we do have in here, you may have gotten the old one, but we do have number seven, the Killington Forward Update, and that will be where we can ask questions.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
But I just want to also, while you had said, I as a board member never took any of your questions or comments as negative or whatever, they were concerned citizen questions. And all I had said that one time was is that I have to hope that we can get something. So I appreciate you coming out, but you do have questions and we still waiting for some answers on some of them, so.
Steve has his hand.
We'll wait for, we'll wait for that number seven item. But thank you, Art.
And we have a Steve front that's zooming in.
If Steve can say who the last name is.
Finer.
It's finer.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Stephen, you're up.
Chet, I'm just wondering if we have a written understanding of when the sign, which the Fight Department Corporation has put money aside for, when that sign is going to be taking place, what its status is at this point?
They are constructing it, the materials for the couple of signs that they're working on have just come in and they are working on it as we speak. We just now have to figure out when we're going to be able to do the install.
So I guess is the hope that it'll be in before, is there an approximate date a hope for?
I don't have one from them yet, but it's supposed to, I know they've been working on it because we also have the Route 100 sign that's part of that same thing.
When is the next time we're meeting?
The 28th is the regular.
The 28th, but we'll probably have some kind of meeting. We are meeting Thursday as a board for the, can you please reach out to the sign company?
I'll get you, I'll get you a date.
You know? And, and so that brings up a question to me. That's the sign, but does that sign include, is this the sign?
With the electronics.
With the electronics?
Yes.
Is the electronics on order?
We're, yeah, they were getting back to me with the final, we made, we modified the spec a little bit to save a little money and I'm just waiting for that signature.
Okay. So if you can just get that to us.
So we will move on to Lucretia, do you have a liquor control?
Yeah, I have two. One is, well, let's start with the easy one first, the outside consumption for the resort for the World Cup. You should have a map in front of you and showing the area and approval. I don't think they're looking at any major changes.
I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward the application for the outside consumption permit, limited permit for Killington Resorts, Inc. Which is basically the Killington Base Lodge, right, Lucretia?
That's right.
And it says the, it says the extended area around K1 Base Lodge for FIS World Cup event. See the attached map? And then we have a colored map behind it. So it's the same as last year, it's that whole ticket venue, whatever, with the band playing and, you know, so I don't have a problem with.
And this will be similar to Cooler in the Mountains where they actually put up a slight rope.
Yeah, the resort knows.
And drink within there.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that and they certainly know what they're doing.
Yeah. We're just giving permission for Lucretia to move forward. It's up to the Division of Fire Safety to go in, Division of Liquor to go in and make sure that you're doing whatever, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of having Lucretia move forward with the application for outside consumption to Killington Restaurants Incorporated? Please say aye.
Aye. Obstand.
Now we have a Rolling Rooster.
Yeah, the Rolling Rooster is going to be, I guess the Skyship is being subcontracted out there. The food and beverage is going to be subcontracted out to the Rolling Rooster. So they have to apply for the first and third class license.
So the Rolling Rooster, there's a Nicole, I forget her last name, has been in touch with me as the zoning administrator. They're well aware that the resort is dropping their liquor license in that building. Rolling Rooster is coming in to take over the food and the bar and beverage. And she has licenses elsewhere also, so she is filing the paperwork with the town. I have to get her the permit for new business up there. They would like to be open sometime right before Christmas, so we have plenty of time and she just wants to get this license going ahead. I don't see an issue with it since the resort has already answered to me. I know Lucretia, we normally get them to sign a piece of paper, the owner, because someone's leasing it, but I already, I already have also an email from the resort saying that they are abandoning their liquor license in that area so Rolling Rooster could come in. So I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward for Rolling Rooster LLC for a first and third class at the Skyship. This is not an outside, this is just what the currently the resort was doing.
Right.
Okay. All in favor of having Lucretia move forward on Rolling Rooster, please say aye.
Aye. Obstand.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Killington Forward Update, this is where Art gets to ask his questions.
Well, let's first put up a little screen here. So this is today's meeting or whatever, you can jump to the next screen. That's Killington Forward.
Maybe not that one.
You know, so we're going in front of VEPSE on December 15th. We do not have permission yet to do anything because this is the next stage where the state currently is going through all the numbers that we have presented. We don't know where we stand until that, after that meeting of December 15th. So the first phase includes a total project cost of $52 million. There is $46 million worth of debt that's going to come in because so far we have been given some.
Six million.
Six million dollars in state funding and Harper funding from the SRF funds. There is no tax rate impact because of, it is from the increment financing above at the project that is being proposed. We have meetings that will start in January through really March, the first Tuesday of March because of the town vote. The reason why we say we're going to have starting meetings with all of our information is because December 15th is going to decide what comes out. We've got our website up on the town, there's the Mountain Times. If there's a positive vote in March 7th after we do all our presentations, we're planning on groundbreaking in the summer of 2023. So just to be clear, this is like an 18-month project, this first phase, so a lot of groundbreaking is water first, getting up to, from pasta pot and up. You want to go to the next page? There you go, Art, questions?
The questions are, have to do with the contract and as I said, you know, I think it's well done and I think I like the concept of the developer committing to cover the increment. As I understand it, the developer will cover the increment, the tax increment, as those incremental taxes come on, their commitment will start to drop off. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay. The first thing I noticed, and it's really a question about who we're dealing with, where the contract is with Great Gulf Enterprises 2017. 2017.
So Great Gulf, Great Gulf is a Canadian company, okay? And they started doing business in the United States in 2017, they formed companies because you have to open up the.
Yeah.
Organization in the United States, okay? If you look up Great Gulf 2017 LLC, or if I can forward it to you, you're going to see that then in there, there's partnerships in there and it does go up towards the Toronto company.
So are they backed up financially? Is there a parental guarantee in there?
Is there a parental guarantee? I'm going to have to verify that, Art.
Okay.
I mean, what the contract is saying is, is that they're guaranteeing up to $300 million worth of increments financing to cover the $46 million worth, which is not going to take $300 million on the grand list.
But let's hope not.
Right. We don't know where interest rates are going to go by then.
Yeah.
So, but I doubt that's ever going to happen that high anyway. So the question that you have, I will, and I kind of figured that question would be coming up. It was a lot working this contract, so.
Yeah. No, I understand. I mean, this is not an easy kind of deal to put together.
One of the things, yeah, once you look through some of the details in there, you will find that it's tied to the land and anybody else after that also.
Yeah.
So, so that is one of the bigger, I wanted to make sure that we had it tied to the land, that anyone that takes over, if one was to take over, that that's in the deed and that's under restrictions.
Now, there's an assignment clause in the agreement that says that they can assign it to an affiliate. Is that with, can they assign? I know it says they can't assign the agreement without approval.
Right. So, so, so did you read the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so in the agreement, I think on one of the pages, I forget what it is, and it's underneath assignments, it talks about that they can sign it over to, what they do is they have this Great Gulf 2017.
Right.
If you look at one of their projects in Arizona, I think there is one, you'll see that they started up an LP in Arizona specifically and it goes back to that one. You'll also see in that paragraph, it will say that it could be assigned to Killington Partners and Ski Resorts, which is the ski resort if the ski resort ever wanted to. So those are two that we have said that they can do. Anyone else out of there, if they came in with like, I don't know, a Hilton wanted to come in and put something up or whatever, they would have to come to us or if it was, I think the resort already has it worked out that it couldn't be one of their competitors, but, you know.
The concern that I have goes to the long-term commitment and the long-term liability and the creditworthiness of the assigning.
So what, what that, that, that paragraph that I'm talking about, the partnership, I don't think we're worried about the creditness or worthiness of Powder at this time.
No, but to the affiliates.
And the only affiliate that they can do, it's going to have to be tied back to, that the partnership goes back to Great Gulf up in Canada, someone along the line. It's Great Gulf. It's not going to, if they wanted to change it over to Jim Half or whatever.
Yeah.
The town's going to turn it down.
Is there, I mean, I've done contracts many times where the assignment clause specifically says that it must, that they can assign to an affiliate, but it must be equal or better creditworthiness than the original agreement, than the original company that you're doing business with, the original counterparty.
So when we would do, so when we were doing this contract, I think we're on the same page here, Art, that, that paragraph has nothing to do because we have the right to say no if it's outside of Great Gulf or Powder.
Well, if you assign it to a Great Gulf affiliate.
Right.
It could be, and I'm not saying that they would do this, but in this business, they do shell companies all the time.
Right.
And the shell does not necessarily have the same finances or the same creditworthiness as the parent, and that's when you look for the parent guarantee.
Right.
And if you don't have, if you've already granted the right to assign to an affiliate, but you don't have that creditworthiness issue covered in the agreement, you've given them an effect carte blanche to set up a shell company with very little in the way of financial management.
Yeah, and I had this conversation with the town attorney on it and he's assured me that it is that, of what it is. I'll just, I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to take that question of yours and I will get back to you to make sure that that's what it is.
Okay.
But I've been assured, one of the other things is, is that what we have to remember here is that this is 200 units that need to be sold, and only 68% of them being sold up there before it gets transferred over to other people pay. And when these individuals buy a million dollar place or a $2 million place, I'm sure their creditworthiness is not as good as the.
No, but then they become taxpayers.
But these folks will be taxpayers because they have to guarantee also. So let me get that answer back correctly from the town attorney.
Okay. Yeah, that, it's, the concern obviously is it's a long-term agreement.
Right.
With, and none of us knows what's going to happen.
Right.
And we all know what happens.
Yeah.
Or can happen, obviously. So that's a concern and I've seen it in many other contracts referring specifically to affiliate transfers and creditworthiness.
Right.
And I don't see anything like that in here, so that kind of jumped out at me based on my own experience with agreements.
Like I said, I will get, I will, I will put that on our questions to be answered.
Okay. I can, the rest of it is.
Go ahead. We're in question period.
I want to hit highlights. Oh, with the pipeline starting at the Valley Well Fields, do we have all the right of ways already?
We have started to get the right of ways. We started to get easements. We're looking to do it. That's one of the things that we're working on right now. You know, we can't start the project until we have control of the easements.
But the landowners, everyone is agreed.
Say that again?
Everyone is agreed.
Oh, the land, in the contract, the landlords have agreed that they have to give it to us?
Yeah.
Actually, right now, we're trying to start getting easements.
How many landowner, I mean, it's a lot, it's like four to five miles?
No, to be honest with you, there's only about three.
Three, yeah.
Over that hole.
Well, because, because SP owns the.
Wells.
Wells area.
Yeah.
Then you're going across and then you're going across, you're going underneath Route 4. SP Land, some 12 or 15 years ago, bought that old white house that used to be there in the flats, it's gone. And that road, that property goes from east, from Route 4 all the ways up to East Mountain Road.
Okay.
Then it goes along the right of way of the town and then it goes through, I think, what's your condominiums?
Edgemont.
Edgemont. So it goes through there and then it hits to, and then it comes back down through the resort on.
It's jerky.
So, yeah.
No, I would have thought there were more landowners involved.
There's one little, one little spot that goes through mountainside properties, but it's already has the easements for that.
Yeah.
So the easements are all in place, it's for us to get to that, the town gets control of those easements.
Right.
We're not building anything on something until we have the easements.
Oh, I know that. I just assumed that there were a lot more landowners involved.
No, no, it's actually pretty amazing. There's like three people.
None of whom are going to say no?
It's the resort, it's the land company and there's already an easement from mountainside properties.
Okay.
Just so you know, I had a twitch on my finger, I skipped one slide. I thought there was something, is it? That one.
I was like.
I'm sorry, I just, I hit it and then I went right by it.
I mean, what have we been doing the past few months? We've been working really hard on this.
I know.
I mean, and everybody else, we've been working really hard. We've been in meetings with Water, we've been in meetings with Land, we've been in meetings with lawyers, we've been in meetings with meetings. You know, we've gotten, I had said, we have gotten the $6 million from the state. I did talk about the tax incremental financing and we already did, so we kind of covered that and everything there. I mean, it's really exciting to be working with a company that is a developer and is big, okay? And is really excited about taking this project forward. And at the same time, it will bring much-needed water up and down the Killington Road and even down to Route 4. And it will bring us the opportunity on some properties, maybe to bring in some actual market-rate affordable housing for, you know, we're talking about moving to, well, we are, we already voted for a paid fire department, you know? We're bringing on, I believe we have a new officer in the back room, so we're up to three police officers and, you know, it's, it's, it's exciting and, but it also has to, like I said in the beginning, we were really working hard on minimizing our risk on this. We really couldn't say anything while we, and I really still can't say much other than what's there because I don't know what VEPSE is going to say, Art.
Yeah.
So, any other questions?
No.
Anybody else here have a question on this?
There's two, two hands raised, you can't see, it's.
You can get rid of this progress. Kurt has his hand up.
Kurt has his hand up. Go ahead, Kurt.
I have two questions if I may.
If I may, he still has his hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Okay, two questions. The first one is, is it possible for me to get a copy of this slide thing tonight or tomorrow morning?
How about I send it to you tomorrow morning?
First thing, that'd be great. And then the second question, as you mentioned in the Phase 1 slide, that there are going to be meetings. Do you mean by that, public meetings?
Yes.
Information meetings?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I believe once we have a word back from VEPSE, that in order to get it to a bond vote in March, we need to have public hearings.
There's going to be two public hearings, one prior to it being placed on the ballot. There will be a public hearing sometime in January, like the second or third week of January. And then there is, there will be another one, which will actually be part of the informational meeting, it'll be warned, when we, when we warn the town meeting, there will be a public hearing as part of the public informational meeting, which is the day before the vote. So there will be two meetings at that point when we have all of the specifics done with VEPSE.
And then I believe there, there's still going to be, we're in the middle of negotiating the easements and all that stuff like that, so there will be a bunch of executive sessions, but once, I mean, that's, we're dealing with contracts and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, when we have enough to come out, we will come out and make that stuff public.
Should there be more than the one, I, I know that the night before the, the vote?
Yeah, I'm shooting for two weeks before, what, I don't like, it should be a couple of meetings. Yeah, but let's get to December 15th.
Yeah.
There's at least, we have to have at least two, we could have as many as we want.
We could have more, but let, I mean, to me, it's like, let's get to December 15th and go through there.
One hurdle.
One hurdle at a time.
A big hurdle.
Yeah.
I think the big hurdle was putting, you know, something together like that. I mean, it's been a lot of.
This was the hurdle.
This, that was a lot of work. And, and this whole board, Jennifer on and Tony, Lisa, Lisa Dave Lewis, you know, Chet, I mean, White and Burke, Jeremy Farkas, our town attorney that we have hired on for this year that specifically does this kind of stuff. I mean, it, it, it's been a lot of work, so. Thank you for the kudos, though.
I know, I'm still kind of in shock.
I'm not in shock. I mean, I've had neighbors at yours or whatever, and I go, he's a good guy and he's just looking at it like, that's all.
It's, it's all, you know, in, in terms of the interest of what's best for the town and not everybody's going to agree.
No.
Nope.
Not everybody ever always agrees.
They can't even agree on a PICO interconnect.
You know, so, I mean, you know, and I just don't want to lose this, this, you know, like, I'm not going to get into other phases of this project. You know, there is one Act 250 permit that is permitted and this is what this development agreement is based on. It's not, it's not based on any other, we just need this one phase to go through to do the better for the community and then help move forward with other phases going through. But, you know, we have a company that is willing to, they're taking that risk on, so. You know, we have a company that is willing to, to take, they're taking that risk on, so. Steve Feiner has his hand up.
Yeah, my question, I think there's been discussion, excuse me, about landowners in the valley and the effect on our water aquifer.
You think, well, there was a discussion about landowners getting the pipe up. As far as the effect on neighboring wells, is that the question?
Yes.
That has to go, all this stuff has to, has to be approved by the state of Vermont.
That's a requirement to monitor their well.
So, so they have to follow those rules.
For private well.
I mean, there's already been two wells in that area that have been approved with that study being done. And I'm sure they have to do it as we bring more wells on, Steve.
Okay.
And in the discussion, when we went to the bigger well, we were going to shut down the smaller wells.
Well, I mean, that's, but we have to do the, we have to do the.
We're going to have to check, monitor the other surrounding wells as part of a requirement by the state.
We have a top hydrologist on by the name of.
Jeff Hoffer.
Jeff Hoffer. So he's well aware of the requirements, he's well aware of, he's already been, Stephanie Clark, yeah. She's well aware of the study that needs to be done, and he's on top of it. You know, we have Jeff Hoffer, we have Wayne Elliott, who is another person, and we have another company, DeFrans Group, that's engineering the, the pump houses and everything else for us, so we're moving forward, and we're told that we're not going to have any issues affecting anyone's wells outside or inside the, inside the, the area. So we have to go with the professionals, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hands up for this.
Any other questions online?
Is this, is this where we're doing the statement for the part of the Killington forward, or are you doing that later?
We'll do it after the tax.
We'll do it after this.
Budget term.
But I think I saw Stephanie from Whiten Burke sign on, and she just signed on, but when I send you the recording, you got to listen to the beginning of this, give arts kudos, thank you.
Will do.
There she is.
There you go. Thank you.
And it does move them to the top if we unmute.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're going to have more than two meetings, I believe, I believe in that. It's a big goal. And it needs to get a lot of information out.
Well, the first will be a meeting with the acceptance by VEPSC. To let people know that we've made that step.
Right.
Okay, Lisa is not back from her meeting, so we'll go to number nine, the Declaration of Inclusion.
Want to take a seat up here?
No, I'm right here.
Come on, or a while.
Do you want to move in front of the mic so they can hear you?
He can hear her.
Don't worry about it, I'm fine.
We're just offering.
Thank you very much.
Do you, do you have a copy of what came back to us?
Final, I have it, but not in that form, not the exact form. But yeah, I'm pretty sure I know.
I don't think Andy really needs to say anything, to be honest with you, I'm just looking somewhere.
Just take a vote and approve it.
Do you want?
Clip to the thing.
I'll look on with Chet.
So, Town and Killington Declaration of Inclusion is basically rewritten, I think one paragraph was dropped. The Town of Killington condemns racism and discrimination in all its forms and commits the fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. Our town strives to provide a safe and welcoming environment for all citizens and visitors. The Town of Killington continues to adhere to its existing employment harassment policy as it pertains to all town municipal employees. Then from there, there's in the bottom is references, just as long as those references stay true to there, and I guess it does. So then it goes on to say, adopted by the Select Board of the Town of Killington, Vermont, this 14th day of November 2022. And I make a motion for the Select Board to sign with those dates added into this block, blank, statement of the date and the, and the month.
Okay, is there a comment from anybody either here or zooming in? Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the references are there, they're just generic ones. There's probably 20 others, but we just put a couple in, just to say, here's some, and keep hunting and you'll find more.
Okay.
So, motion on the table is to first assign this.
Yes, all in favor of the Select Board accepting the Town of Killington Declaration of Inclusion, please say aye.
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 And can we please just add the date to it, of 14th day of?
Yeah, why don't you just handwrite it in? I just did.
You've got one right here, Steve.
He's got one filled in.
Oh, he's got it started already? Okay.
Thank you for the work, for the folks that did this.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just say, Gene, Gene was, saying here, Gene was on our committee.
Jerry Russell.
Jerry Russell. Beverly Anderson was there. Mike Miservi was there.
Mike Miservi, yeah.
And, and Chet, who ran it the whole thing, who did a terrific job.
I didn't pay him to say that.
I was just going to say.
It went very smooth, it went very smooth the whole time.
Great.
Thank you.
And I was, thank you for really taking care of, knowing what you wanted to say, not what we wanted you to say. Thank you, because we agree on this.
Awesome. I would say that's an accomplishment.
I would too.
The.
I didn't choke on those words either.
Number 10, the DRB alternate appointment?
Yeah, basically.
You have someone?
Well, no, Marissa had sent an email in representing the, the DRB requesting that the Select Board appoint someone as an alternate. And she didn't, we had somebody who was considering it, and they decided not to.
I'd like to table that to executive sessions for personnel because they're talking about appointing somebody. And, and Marissa has a good reasoning for it. I mean, I'm the DRB administrator, zoning administrator, and sometimes it's hard getting three people to show out of five to, to make it a quorum.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I see the, next up is the.
Zoning amendments.
So. You want to reopen the?
Yeah, basically, the Select Board would be opening a public hearing notice for proposed amendments for Section 120, 407 and 640. This is primarily surrounding the short-term rental regulations, basically stating that the short-term rental regulations within the zoning document will be superseded eventually when the Select Board passes an ordinance. So it's basically putting the language in for that. In addition, there are two existing notices that we did at, at a couple of meetings ago. One was for the lighting and bylaws and off-street parking, and the other was for accessory dwelling units, districts, and off-street parking as well. Those changes are all items that we've had the first public hearing for, but they are all still currently open because the, the Select Board continued those to a future date to, so that when the adoption finally happens, if these are adopted, would all, could be done under one, one approval.
Can you bring this up on the website?
So that hearing notice is still open?
Yeah, the other two hearings are still open.
The zoning administrator, since it was presented to the, to the Select Board, these rules are in effect for some 180 days, I believe, for us to adopt them. So anyone that comes in, and even now the short-term rental that comes in, I have to adhere to these rules. So I would like to go, once you pull up the.
Which one do you want to see the?
I'd like to go to, to page 50 for the.
So we're going to that one, all right, because we got the two different ones.
I mean, there's, 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 first, we're starting at page 51, Section 402, prohibited uses, and there's nothing there but 403, structures exempt from zoning permit requirements.
She had, showed it to me earlier, now I can't find it.
You're on the forms right now.
On the planning commission page, Chet.
Ah, that's my mistake. I'm sorry. See, there it is, it comes up easy.
So if we can go to page 51.
51 on that 51.
So page 51, Section 403, it, it stated, structures exempt from zoning permit, they just added the word requirements, okay? And then they made a correction where one is the following structures are exempt, all they did was add one dot, okay? And then the second paragraph, they had to get rid of the one and put A, because it's 1A, and then they made two to be 1B, and then three to be 1C, because it all fell underneath the same. There is actually no changing to any of the words in those there. Then two, the only change is that they added is, the operation of a short-term rental shall not require zoning permit once a short-term rental ordinance adopted by the Select Board becomes effective. Because when we do adopt this, okay, there, there's a 30-day waiting period, and we did, or 20-day waiting period, we did not want to say that the existing zoning drops on short-term rentals until the other one comes into place. So then if you go to page 52, I believe.
53.
52. Oh, yeah, you're right, because 52 is that stuff there. So 53 is the actual Section 407, short-term rental of dwelling unit. The only thing that is changing in this section is, number one, the operation of a short-term rental should not require zoning permit once the adoption of a short-term rental ordinance by the Select Board becomes effective pursuant, pursuant to 24 VSA, 2291, 29, until the date that such an ordinance becomes effective. The rest of the changes are just some little tiny things here. I know we have a bunch of people on for short-term rentals, and I've, I've listened to some of the concerns about the plus two or whatever. I think there was some confusion or maybe misunderstanding. We are sticking to, it's two per bedroom plus two, unless your septic system says differently. And the way we've been taking that is in greater, there are some folks that are on, and not just septic, but you're sewage, you know, when you, you may have some folks that have a five-bedroom septic system that can handle more than 10 and/or 12. I mean, it all depends on what the system is. So the, the, the septic system, if it's greater, that will overrule our 2 plus 2. And that's the only changes in the short-term rental. So just to make sure that everyone understands this, is the board adopts, although the board can either adopt this tonight with the rest, or we can be polite and make this for next month so that all that half-short-term rentals have time to read this once again and, and come back to the next hearing or when we, not table, but recess it to another, so they have time.
And we would then, and then we would be looking at the, the total completed package, which is currently available both online and in paper form at the Town Hall, which has all of the changes from the three separate hearings.
So, I mean.
Are you postponing till the 28th or till December? It's up to you.
It's just an agenda item, it doesn't have a warning, it's on another public hearing.
I know, we're just moving it to, so the two dates that we have a choice to go to are?
28th and the 12th.
Of November?
November and the 12th of December.
I, I would say the 12th of December. 28th of November is not, you know, we got Thanksgiving, people going away, I'm trying to be, you know, we want to make this so that it works.
That's fine.
I'd just like to open it up to anybody in the audience, if they have a question on this process.
If you have a question, unmute yourself so that we can see it on the board.
If anybody in the, online has a question of what we're doing on just the short-term rental here.
Jim, just clarify, you said with the septic, it was?
It's two per bedroom plus two total.
And then, what's the septic part, though? I still don't get that. So the septic can do 10, but the house?
Let's say there's a house that says it's three bedrooms.
Right.
But it sleeps, but the septic system's good for 10.
So then you can go 10?
You could go to 10.
Okay.
And a normal, the three, it would be six, plus two is eight.
Eight, okay.
We're not taking anything away.
Right.
What this board has always said was, is that we were going to a plus two on top of the septic system according to bedrooms.
Yeah.
I do not, and I have actually seen three-bedroom septic systems that have said sleeps nine, and I don't want to take that bedroom, that person away from those people.
Makes sense.
Two nobody's up.
I have a logistical, it's Dave from home.
Hey, Dave.
I have a logistical question.
Sure.
Section 407, shouldn't that be completely stricken when the ordinance goes into effect?
That's what it says.
No, it says there's no permit required. It doesn't say Section 407 is removed, and it may be, it may be minutia, but there are terms in there that include like a number of leases and guests. It seems like that, that whole section should probably be removed if, if it goes to ordinance.
So basically, when I go back to page 53, and this is, probably is minutia because it's legal of a lawyer, that the operation of a short-term rental should not require a zoning permit once the adoption of a short-term rental ordinance by the Select Board is effective. So by the wording from the attorney is, shall not require a zoning permit, technically that means then there's no zoning regulation, so Section 407 will come completely out.
Okay, just, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, Section 407, once the ordinance is in place, will totally go away, okay? When an ordinance goes in place is like 20 or 30 days after this board adopts the ordinance. So you cannot have an ordinance and a zoning, we're getting it out of zoning, Dave.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, and most of that does deal with permitting, but like number five is, is basically like an occupancy thing, so it's, yeah, obviously.
So, so number five on page 54, the number of leases, guests, or other persons using, all that section, so all six will come out, Dave, upon adoption of the ordinance. Now, in the ordinance is going to probably have a number five, but it may be somewhere else that's saying that, it will be worded, there will be occupancy in the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, of course, it, it just kind of talks about, everywhere else talks about, no permit required, but didn't say that 407 was heading on, but.
Yeah, the, the attorney, the attorney had said, once you adopt an ordinance, then the whole zoning has to come out, which means 407 comes out. So believe me, once we adopt the ordinance, and then whatever it is, 20 or 30 days later, it goes into effect, we will have to drop automatically, by passing at that point, we'll automatically drop 407 from. from the, um, the zoning book. Any other questions? Yeah, no, he, he was right on, I mean, it's confusing, it's just like, we're talking to too many lawyers on too many different things, and that was Dave, that's what Kevin Brown was saying, that we had to put those words in.
And the ordinance hasn't been drawn up yet.
And the ordinance has been drawn. But we also said, well, the ordinance could be drawn up, I just didn't think it was fair that we get people to start registering now underneath these rules, and then, I want us to come out with the ordinance, so it starts up for next year.
Right.
Because people may be sitting here in a hearing when we come out with an ordinance, and start bringing up some comments that maybe we did not see, and make sense, and, and make changes.
How frequent can you change the ordinance?
Hopefully, not a lot, but technically, you can change it, you know.
With any vote?
Not with any vote, you have to warn, you have to come through, you have to listen to your voters, you have to do, you know, and if you're going to make a change, they can, you know, this is, this is not like, change an ordinance, change it to ordinance and then make changes, because anyone can ask for a town vote, and, and go from there, so. But the main idea of changing this part of the zoning bylaws to get it out was, to make it so though that the ten or the fifteen percent that are not going by the rules still, it's easier through ordinance.
That makes sense.
Anybody else have questions out there on this? That being said, I will, um, is it recessed?
Yeah, we're going to continue the hearing until.
Continue the hearing.
December twelfth.
To December twelfth. And this way, everybody else, I, I, you know.
Just double-checking my December twelfth.
Just make sure that everybody looks through it. And, and here, there were some definition changes too, but everybody's not through, it's very low. So just, it's, it's continued till December twelfth, everybody look through it, and if you have any questions, then bring it up then.
What, what I will do is, we'll take the, um, all the, the, the three separate ones down off the website, so it's not confusing, and just have the one complete one now, because we've, we've had the three public hearings, we'll just try and make sure we only have the one document up.
Right, so can you do me a favor, like, I, when you do that, it needs to have two different copies. One has to show four oh seven in there while we're waiting for full adoption, and one has to show four oh seven completely wiped out, if it passes. If the ordinance passes.
Right.
If the ordinance doesn't pass, as long as that, so you can't wipe out on your clean copy now.
Well, no, what I was going to suggest is, technically, you only show the changes you're making in this. If we were going to do that, when you put the ordinance up as a draft, you then would say, this is a draft change.
Okay.
To the, to the zoning bylaws, then put those two together. So you can see it comes out of one and goes to the other.
I just want to reassure everybody that was asking questions.
But I'm just saying, for, for the purposes of this, showing it without four oh seven isn't anything to review, because.
We'll make those red changes in four oh seven, but it is definitely clear that upon ordinance passing, four oh seven, the, the zoning thing will change by having that dropped automatically with, with that passage.
You good there? We're on to golf budget.
David, you're here, and Mark is also here, so we can bring them up.
Is that why Aaron's here?
We're here.
There's.
There's David.
There's the budget. You guys have a copy of it, you need special glasses to read.
While you're pressing that.
That was Aaron, Aaron's on the call as well, he's a director of the group. I don't, Quinn Smith, I believe, is traveling, I did speak with PJ, he's also traveling, expect to be on the call, but I haven't.
Is Mark on?
I'm on, there you go.
You're on?
Right.
Mark, you're here as well, right, because I saw him sign in.
Yes.
Okay. So if you guys want to just give us like a brief overview, and then I know Mark had sent some questions back to, to you guys for response, and we want to get into some of those, so just give us a brief overview about the changes in the budget from last year to this year on the operations side, and then we can talk about capital.
Okay, so I can, I can run through, the process I use is, is very simple and very straightforward, it's, you know, basic budgeting one oh one, I look at what we did this year in terms of actuals, and I, I place those numbers into the budget, not only for revenue and income, but also for costs relating to items we purchase, and also, you know, wages, and, and obviously labor costs and things like that. Most of those, if you go to the detail page, there are notes attached, which can give the select board an idea of how, how much things have increased, and how much things are stayed. So the process I use has been the same for the last five years.
So I just have a question on page one of twelve, when you get into green fees, there's one that says seven percent increase based on pricing and actual two thousand and twenty-two numbers, so that's fine. Then when you get to cart fees, for eighteen-hole cart fee, it says based on two thousand twenty-two numbers, is that actual or what you had budgeted?
The, the numbers you see there are the numbers we did in, uh, in this operational year.
Okay, so they're actuals, sometimes people use, no matter what, even if they didn't hit the number, they, or they were over the number, they still go back to the budgeted number, so that's all.
Okay.
So, Mark, you had brought some questions, I know you sent to, to, and I, I keep saying Brown, but Great Life Golf, Golf?
PJ just clicked in.
Oh, there's PJ.
Yep.
Yeah, I had sent a sheet to David, just to review, and I, I, I'm just getting back today. I was out last week, David was out the prior two weeks, um, so, and it looks like in most cases, he has inserted the number that I put, um, so I think there's still some minor things to start to tweak. If you want, we can go through it, you know, line by line, or I can just do this with David offline, knowing that I don't think the, the changes are significant in nature.
Well, what we're doing here today is just part of the whole budget process of going forward, and it has to get ready for us to be ready by sometime in January, for moving forward. I don't want to sit here and listen to two, two or three or four financing guys, you know, picking, picking over pennies, or dollars, or hundreds, so I, I, I would, I would take Mark's suggestion.
Yeah, and, and my thing is with, when Mark gets done, when they get done with this process, then we'll be putting it into NIMRIC, and then we can read our numbers compared to last year, and we'll go from there.
But instead of keep, I, I think once Mark and Great Life Golf, Golf, we got one company that's a developer called Golf, and now we have a Golf, um, you know, comes to an agreement on, on this, then this board should adopt based on the finance manager and, and Great Life Golf, Golf.
Agreed.
All right.
Is this going to affect their long-term capital budget, or do they want to do that?
No, that's, we want to do, we want to have the conversation.
We're going to have that conversation, unless anybody from David's group would like to make any comments on this budget going forward, but I don't think, I think we're all in agreement, let these guys hash out the final details.
So then it's just an update on your, on your capital plan, you know, making sure that we had filled in those, those blanks that, that Mark was looking for, so we can look at the long-term and make sure we have the cash flow to make it happen.
Yeah, and on that, on that capital plan, we have Aaron here, who is the expert on this, so if, if the board has any questions regarding that, please direct them to him, he put this document together, which I, I think is spot on.
And I'm going to still defer it, Mark, have you had a chance to go through it?
I've looked at this, what, what was circulated, um, must be about a month ago now, so, uh, there was a, the superintendent over at the course, Bob, he had an Excel document with all equipment listed in. It was the most comprehensive list of equipment I had seen, did it need cleanup? Absolutely. And I spoke with Robert, and volunteered to, to work with him to do that. He has the knowledge, and I probably have a little more experience with Excel, um, so, and I thought it would be a good learning experience for me as well, given that, there's a lot of equipment on there that is old and gone. It, it's still there, maybe, but it's, it needs to be scrapped, it needs to be sold for, you know, whatever price we can get type, um, and, and then, the, the plans that I've seen most recently only, uh, pertain to the leased equipment that we leased last year, and that we were in line to come and lease next year. So, what I'm concerned with is all the other equipment that needs to be purchased to, to effectively run and support the club from a maintenance perspective. I don't, as comprehensive as the sheet we're looking on, on Chet's desktop, I'm not seeing the, the other equipment.
And, and also, we have to add in the concept of the, any of the facility upgrades as well.
So, I didn't know if I'm, certainly if I missed something, please, Aaron, you can, you can fill in some blanks.
Yeah, so, Mark, I think probably what you're looking at is like, long, like, life expectancy of some of the equipment, so over the next, say, seven years through twenty-eight, twenty-nine, this is what we're looking at, is what we're going to need to replace. Everything else that's on site that's still functional, will still continue to be functional through twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
So, there is no, um, these are all rather, you know, significant purchases, so, for example, a, a T mower, which is, which would be much smaller piece of equipment, and you would likely have multiple mowers like that, maybe in the five to eight thousand dollar range, they're, they're all fine, and we won't buy in any of those.
Yeah, they're, what you're looking at is those, they're hand mowers, so we no longer currently use those very often, they use them on a timely basis, but, yeah, there's, I, I can't remember exactly, but there's probably close to eight, six to eight, maybe even ten, hand mowers, set for different types of uses, but, uh, most of what we're using now is ride-on equipment from the shorter labor numbers.
Okay, so, the, you're familiar with the sheet that I, I mentioned that Robert had?
Correct.
Okay, and the first thing I did when I opened that up, was I did a sum of the column, and it was, it was over a million dollars, one point two million or something. That, that would be an accurate portrayal of the equipment that Green Mountain National.
That, that should be what your insurance policy should cover, so should the, should it all burn down and you need to replace it, that would be what it would cost, but the, the life expectancy, it's not like, we, we don't need to replace a million dollars worth of equipment over the next five years.
Okay, all right.
So what I'm hearing is, is that the, the long-range capital plan that we have in front of us is the equipment that you're going to need to get you through to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and that, um, in twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm not going to see some two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that's not on here show up.
Yeah, barring any catastrophic failures, no, we shouldn't have to.
Well, that would be a replacement of something that's already on this list. I think what Mark is asking is, this is not the only equipment that you have, there are other equipment, and you believe that other equipment would last past two thousand twenty-nine.
Yeah, correct, since, since two thousand twenty-one, you've replaced, you know, and barring the recent discussions we've had with the tutorial package for two thousand twenty-four, those are all replacing the major pieces of equipment that we use on a daily basis, that, that need to be replaced.
Okay, and some of that equipment that we've done in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, are going to get us out past twenty-nine at this time.
Yeah, correct, even, even the grinders that we bought, those are twenty-year-old, those, life expectancy is twenty years old.
Okay, you know, I understand where Mark's coming from, because if, let's say, some of this stuff is supposed to come back online to be purchased in thirty-one, thirty-two, he's just concerned, what do the numbers look from, from twenty-nine on? I think that's where he's coming from. But right, right, right now, you have a plan that gets us out to two thousand twenty-nine, you know, we've already approved at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, for you to go ahead and put stuff that, put stuff on order that we never know when we're going to get, in this, in this, in this market, you just don't know. You don't even know the cost, but we're hoping that it sticks to whatever. But I get back to, to, I would really like, um, this is fine by me, but I would really like to get back to the question that Chet had, is, is that the facility, facilities have to be looked at also, such as, you know, what do we have to do there, and, and I know, like, that garage, that Robert's out of, whatever, is going to need some stuff or whatever in there, and.
Well, and, and the other thing that, when I'm looking at the list, we talk about, I know we've talked about ultimately having to spend upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars on the irrigation system, and in the next five years, we only have sixty-two thousand allotted to that, and I didn't know, is that enough? In addition to the fact that that's like a fifty thousand dollar increase to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget? Because it, the total becomes like a hundred and sixty-three thousand for that year, so, you know, how are we accounting for that? And, you know, is that the correct amount for the irrigation improvements, like, in total, I know those items are covered, but, you know, in the next five years, is that going to cover everything we have to do with irrigation?
Um, there are, I'm working with Bob on, um, the, the other thing that would be possibly added to this in the next five years would be the pump station that pumps the water, I'm working with Bob right now to address what our options are there from a full overhaul, but the, the system's twenty-five years old, so in the next ten years, we're going to have to look at replacing that, so it's more or less trying to identify, you know, how, how many more years can we get out of what we currently have? And so that's, that's kind of a work in progress.
So this goes back to a discussion I would have at the previous group that was managing the golf course, and, you know, that whole irrigation system with, and it's mostly the control houses and all that other stuff, you are talking a million dollars to replace a whole.
A whole new system, yeah, these, these days, you're roughly anywhere between one point two to one point eight for eighteen holes.
So when Brown, when Brown first came on, okay, I think there was a study done on this system that John had somebody check into, so if we can just dig that back up or whatever and see, because there's no, you know, how many times are you going to do a study on a beat-up old system? I mean, I, I think, I think we have to start planning of putting some money aside for, um, some capital repairs on the, not capital repairs, but a replacement or whatever, and it's nothing big, I mean, if, if it means like, you guys come back to us with your study, Aaron, and saying, you know, we're looking over the old study, that, hey, we can get another ten years out of this, then why don't we start putting fifty, sixty grand away into, for a restricted fund to replace the, the irrigation system?
And, and realistically, by the time we get to two thousand thirty-two, two thousand thirty-three, we will start needing to have in those discussions, what you see on the capital plan here now is, is the controllers for the irrigation system.
Correct.
Basically, twenty-five years old, we're dealing with twenty-five-year-old technology. What we can do is, you know, start replacing those, so we have updated technology, which make our, you know, make the life of the superintendent a lot easier, but it also, you know, reduces irrigation needs, as far as, they're just more efficient. The infrastructure in the ground, pipes, valves, that, that you're going to get another at least ten years out of that. It's, it's more or less the updating the software and the technology to make the. It's, it's more or less the updating the software and the technology to make the, make the system run more efficiently.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the plumbing. I'm worrying about the hardware, software that, when you start telling me 25 years old, you know, if I go into my control box for a water system or a sewer system, it's outdated and you can't get the parts anymore. So that means you need to get a whole new system at that point.
Yeah. And that's, that's what we're addressing and the way, the way with the software and stuff like that, that we can integrate that into a new system, say, down the road as well. It's not like we say, we replace the software now and then two years down the road, we need to look at a new system, we've got to replace it again. It can be integrated over time and phased out. Realistically, the infrastructure in the ground is going to last a good bit longer. It's more or less updating everything around it over the next kind of 20 years.
And we did, we did rebuild the, the primary pumps a couple of years ago, right? Yeah.
Uh, that, I, maybe rebuilding them? Yeah, that could be, but getting to a point where the age of them is going to cost more to maintain them. And again, from an efficiency standpoint, we're going to need to address that here, you know, in, in the next five years. It's a work in progress with Bob as far as identifying his issues with that now, but...
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to end it with just saying that I think you should get together with David for, I mean, for, with Mark to go over some of this other infrastructure stuff instead of just the lawn mowers and all that other stuff. That's all. So we have the right plan in front of us to budget for the right amount of money down the road. That's all.
Yep. This would be a continuing list too. So say next year, you know, I'll work with Bob to, what do we need in '29 and '30? What do we need the next year? What do we need in '30 and '31?
And then, and then Mark will tell us if it works with the plan.
Yeah. If we need to move something up, we can do that. If we need to move something back to make things work, that, that can work too. And it's, it's all about, you know, expectations and, 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 you know, realistically forecasting our equipment needs over the next five years is, is a plan. And that's, that's, you know, it'll, it'll certainly change a little bit.
Yeah, that might fit in a little bit later. Sometimes you make changes in your plans, you bring things up, you bring, you push things forward, forward and some things you, you push back or whatever. So I appreciate it.
Yeah. And like those total numbers down there, what I tried to do is keep it realistic too. So again, it's, it's addressing priorities immediately with also addressing, you know, needs in the future. But as you can see, that trying to keep that number somewhat flatlined going in the future, it's a lot easier to budget. So that's the overall goal.
You good with that, Mark?
Sure, yeah, yeah. For now.
And Mark, you know, you and I can get together when it suits you and, and we can update those numbers and then get something we can present to the board for approval.
Yes, yeah, to finalize this.
Absolutely.
That's great. Two guys that probably traveled out of the country to different places are going to get together. Good luck.
That'll be fun. Now, Chet, are you, you guys still playing? Is this the court Thursday?
Yes, we are.
Great. That'll, that'll make everything, that'll help everything because once you put your eyes and your hands on it, you're going to have a greater appreciation of what we're doing.
Yep.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Oh, and so the last item for the golf was the VLCT. And this is not really related to Brown or their presentation, but VLCT is our, our insurance company and they've had an annual golf tournament. It did get paused through COVID and, and this year they weren't able to do it because the cost had become so much. You know, everything has gone up. And when they last did this tournament, they charged, they were charged $5,000 and then included a barbecue and the golf carts. And they're asking, you know, does, do they need to move a time? What can the select board do to help them? They do want to have this tournament at our course again.
So, so Chet filled me in on this. I guess a couple of years ago, we were charging five grand for a full package, Vermont leagues, the cities and towns.
Well, tell me with something there. I mean, I'm getting eight and a half thousand dollars for the golf course now. So, but if you guys want this event, let me know. It's not going to be five, it could be six, six and a half. And that's still, that's still at a pretty good discount.
I, I, I think that, I think the executive director, Ted Brady, who is actually coming into the town on November 29th for a visit, this is where we get our health and our, our insurance and everything from. I don't know if you guys know that. You know, we raise them, they raise us, right? What game are we playing here? You know, I think they understand that the August time period is a hot ticket time or whatever. And I believe you had said, Chet, that, um, he had mentioned they would like maybe June. You tell us when.
Yeah, they said, tell us when, when they could, when that affordability curve can meet so that they can have it, not affect the golf course negatively. And I told them, I said, well, you know, one thing, they always had this on Fridays, I believe. I said, well, Fridays are just as busy as Saturdays now. It's going to have to be more midweek. It's not going to be able to be a Friday. He just, just let us know, we'll make it work.
So I, I'm going to, I'm going to give directions to the town manager to work out a date with VLCT for their regular golf outing at the $5,000 rate that they had and work it out. I don't want them in, in like the rainy May or whatever, or something like that, but, you know, midweek or whatever, it is VLCT. This is not your typical, you know.
No, I get it. I totally get it. Yeah, first two weeks in June would, would work.
Okay. So if you guys can, if you guys could pick out, if a Friday works, if it doesn't, then push until another day, David.
Okay. We'll do it. Understand.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
We got Lisa here. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, Nikki? Oh, she made it, huh? Municipal resolution.
Just wanted to tell them.
Want to sit up here, join us?
So I'm looking, we're looking for a resolution from the select board to authorize a submission for municipal planning grant. The planning, this came at the request of the planning commission chair, Jennifer, who when I indicated to the planning commission that there was a round of grant application for municipal planning grant, she had asked that we submit an application to do an updated recreation master plan. So we're putting, I'm putting together the application. It's due the end of, by December 1st. The maximum grant award is 36,000, I'm sorry, $26,000. We're going to be seeking the maximum. There's a minimum match of 10%. We're probably going to need to put in a little bit more than 10%. I'm still working on the budget. Sarah Newell, the recreation director, who's still been around and I have been working on the budget and we spoke to a consulting firm in Burlington that kind of specializes in this. And he was, he thought the budget looked pretty good, but he was going to get back to me. And it looks like the overall budget is probably about $35,000. So 26 would come from grant, the balance would come from the planning commission.
Yeah. So would, would you think this would come from your special projects fund?
I would think so.
So we already have the funds going to it. Instead of paying full, you're going for a grant to get it done.
Right, correct. So what the study is going to probably do is a survey that's going to do a needs assessment as to what the needs are for recreation need, both obviously for youth, teens, also seniors, and then take a look at our existing facilities, do an assessment of the facilities and then come up with some preliminary cost estimates as to what it would cost to upgrade the facilities. It's not a, an engineering study. Kind of the next phase of this would be, you know, if we wanted to move forward, it would actually be an engineer, hiring an architect or an engineer to kind of give us design and cost estimates.
So I'll make a motion for the planning commission to move forward, the FY '23 municipal resolution for municipal planning grant. And the funds can be used from, the matching funds, yeah, the matching funds could be used from the planning commission's special funds.
I have a question. You mentioned seniors. Could you expand on that a little bit?
60 and over.
I got it.
No, I'm just, I mean, we're going to be, as part of this, we're going to be doing most likely a survey and it would go out to all members of the community. And obviously I think that there's demand, we know there's demand for increased camps, for example, but there may be demand for more senior activities.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
There's a lot of us.
I have a motion on the table.
Second.
That's the one that's signed.
Okay.
On the favor.
Aye.
The one that Jennifer signed, right.
Yeah.
I think we all have a copy of Jennifer's signature.
We do.
Because I scanned it anyway, so.
Yeah. And then you have to sign the front page along with Chet. So.
Because you put you as the alternate contact person. Is there a signature?
Well, it says number three B is you, but I think, oh, no, it just...
Yeah, there's no signature.
Okay.
Just who it is.
All right, Jennifer signed it.
Yeah, okay.
Jennifer had signed. Thank you. So let's go back to the agenda, Chet, on that.
Go back on budget.
Why don't we bring the library first since these ladies are sitting here?
Patiently.
Patiently, smiling.
And they're the first one on the list anyway.
Oh.
First of the budgets, not first on the whole agenda.
Okay. We'll have to work on somebody on that.
Huh? I just, as a balance, your great...
Oh, really? Say that a little louder.
So, you know, again, is there anything you would like to bring up about your budget?
The trustees have been a little concerned over the telephone telecom line item because we don't really know still where we are with VTAL and Comcast. They've also brought up the question about utilities and wondering if with everything increasing the way it is, if that needs to be increased a little bit. But actually, the only thing we've asked for, that we've not asked for before, is $3,000 for archival. The reason being, several years ago, archival was taken out of the budget for some reason. I don't remember exactly why. We've gotten a lot of donations of materials from families that are here in Killington that have been in Killington forever. We just got some Civil War letters from the Estabrook family with some portraits from the Estabrook family. We've got Naismith Chauncey Adams Civil War diaries. All this stuff, it will lose if we don't get it digitized. So that's what the 3,000 additional monies is for. The 6,000 for tent rental isn't really an increase in the budget. That usually we spend at the end of the year. It comes out of, what is it, youth librarian? Because we have a part-time youth librarian and not a full-time. So there is money left in the budget at the end of the year, which would cover tent rentals.
Can you just state your name and who you are for people that don't know who you are?
Jane Ramos, library director for the Sherburne Memorial Library.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm questioning the telephone, but we'll get to that at another point because I think we're looking at the telephone throughout the whole town.
Yeah.
And where we are with the contract that we're supposed, you know, that we have.
Right.
So on the utilities, I mean, electricity is pretty much at the same, right?
It's about the same.
Or whatever. I mean...
With the solar too, I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. Yeah. So, and then I think we just redid some propane that is probably lower than what we were in the last couple of years.
Yeah, I think the, I think the utility budget is fine.
Yeah. Well, I know that, I know that Mark and Mona have been working on reallocating all of the, the funds. They've done it with the, the centralized telephone system. They're allocating it to each department again. So they've broken out all up and I'll have, basically we'll have to get a, a breakdown sheet where we could talk about just these specific items separately from this part of it and we'll do that at the next one.
I've been on the board for quite a while and the library comes in with a budget. You can see just here FY 2022 was budgeted to 18. They came in at 210. They were budgeted for this current year at 221, 181. Most likely they're going to be a few thousand dollars below that. And, you know, they're asking for 248, 64 with the cost of certain things going up. I don't see a problem with this budget at all.
Capital budget, I don't know, do you want to talk about capital at all?
Well, we, we did our, our site visit and we're working on updating that piece of it and we'll be doing that at the meeting on the 28th.
Well, the trustees have decided on a color.
Ah. Ooh. Decisions.
Decisions, yes. We never expected that Peter would paint half a wall. We thought he would paint one little board. But between the staff, the trustees and everybody in town that has an opinion, we are down to two colors, one 97% and one 3%, and green wins. Green?
That's what the board, when we went and visited, that's what we went with.
Yeah. Somebody said the best line I've heard all year is it would be nice to see something green in the middle of February. And if it's the library, that's fine. So.
And you can't go to the resort anymore and see green because they're going cashless. Thanks a lot, Jane.
Yep.
Thank you, Jane.
Do you want to, this is one of my trustees. I don't know, do you want to say something? You've been sitting here for an hour and a half.
We did express concern about the utilities and also about the, the length of the time it's taken to resolve the phone issue.
And the board's sitting, asking questions on that.
Thank you.
And on the utilities, I don't know, I think we were paying over $2 a gallon for propane last year and we just locked in at $1.69 a gallon.
We, we all looked at our individual and our business utility costs and we were worried that the library would have this, a similar effect.
Right. But you're, you're seeing a good drop on your main propane usage, so thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, you want to give like an update to the library on where you are on the little visit that we had with them?
Yeah, so we've, we did turn, we got the drawings from Chet.
You found them?
Yes. Well, he, we put, he put them together.
They were a mess.
They were. And so we turned over a copy to the architect. I did a site visit with him. We went through things and trying to address some of the problems on the backside of the building as it faces the mountain. One of the things, we, looking at the structure, how it was built, and he's going to come back with some recommendations so that we kind of alleviate the spider web garden you have there and get rid of the dirtiness and hornets' nests and everything else, your little science project, as we should call it.
Yep.
So, and we kind of toured the grounds area and discussed things. And he's going to put in for relocating right away, the propane tank in a direction that will fit. And so hopefully we can get that done in the springtime. And with that utility, then later on, looking at the cost of moving the compressors for the air handling system as well. So you end up with a better entrance going off to the events that you conduct on the field area.
The concerts won't be right next to the air.
Yeah. So, and then the other concept being, he, he does, now he has a drawing where the actual septic is, the leach fields, so that he can work around that and kind of start to sketch some stuff out of what it could look like in there in the future. So it's all moving in a, let's say, a positive direction.
You mentioned the propane tanks getting?
Yep. I just said, yep, propane tanks. And I do have a phone call in to a lighting designer I work with so that we can look at addressing the lighting issues for the future so that we can...
Inside the building.
Put that inside for the budgetary purposes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
There is one last thing we would like to request as a staff.
Yeah.
Say that again?
I said, there is one last thing we would like to request as a staff. We'd like to add $10,000 to the budget for counseling for our staff for having to deal with Chet every day.
We've already accepted your budget as...
Oh, well, it was worth a shot.
She just wanted it recorded.
I did, actually, I did, I did.
So I got a text from... So I got a text from a person saying that they're trying to zoom in, but they're requiring a password.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's a public.
Yeah. You know, gave up, several of the people could not get in either.
Well, everybody has the same link. I can resend it to her.
You have, what are you going to resend it to her as?
Just sending her the link that I just sent to Suzanne and everybody else.
To the email or to her phone?
I was going to send it to her email because it's easier from here.
Tell me when you sent it.
It's there.
You ready for police?
Want to pull up, guys?
Sure. I'll just introduce.
You went on behind.
Uh-huh.
Pull over.
My name's William Darwin, the chief.
Come on up here.
Want me to do that?
Here, right up here. Come on, Chris.
Come on, come on.
You guys are police officers, you shouldn't be embarrassed.
Thanks.
Pull, pull over here.
So first, I just wanted to introduce Chris Roy. He's our officer, Christopher Roy. He's a new officer who began the beginning of October. So for anyone who has not met him yet, I figured it's better to meet him here instead of on the side of the road. So Chris started his career in 2008 with Benton County Sheriff Department. In 2012, he transitioned to Vermont Drug Task Force, where he worked on drug-related crimes and gun-related crimes. He also assisted with Major Crime Unit for the State Police, worked on homicides and also with federal partners investigating federal crimes involving guns and drugs as well. And Chris will, he'll be a good fit. He kind of believes in the community-oriented style of policing that we try to implement here in Killington. And I think his experience with complicated cases and stuff like that will bode well for us here as well. So, welcome, Chris.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys.
So I was putting together the budget. I tried to be as conservative as possible, but also times are changing with additional officer as well as additional cruiser and stuff like that. So I included those things into my budget. I also tried to reflect kind of more real numbers in the past couple of years as far as traffic enforcement with, with tickets and stuff like that. So we can go by line item by line item, or we can go through, and I can answer any questions the board may have first.
So the police grants, I know they've been put on hold because of COVID and stuff like that, and we really think we have a?
Yes, so there's a couple, there's a couple different police grants we do. There's governor's highway safety, which is click-it-or-ticket grants. It's also DUI enforcement grants. It's usually about $5,000. We've done pretty well in the past, so I think we're going to be back up to speed. We've actually already been okayed for a disbursement of $5,000 right around there, which won't be till after the first of the year, though. So that's, that's coming back. We also applied this year, and we received a $10,000 passive grant. So we got close to $10,000 in different equipment and stuff, and that was not matching. So we should be able to get that again next year. I don't see any reason not to.
And all of these, both of the grants, both the governor's highway safety program and the regular police grants have the same expense line as they do income, so it's actually a pass-through line item as far as the budget's going.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but civil process, that's been pretty consistent over the last number of years. A lot of times we get, you know, it's for serving civil process, evictions and stuff like that for attorneys or different, you know, different people. Again, I dropped the traffic fees down to more, I think, where we're going to be at. Again, that could be, the more officers we add, the more enforcement we're going to see, and potentially could drive revenues, hate to call it revenues, but that, that is what it is. Again, police grants, the $10,000 you see there, that's passive, governor's highway safety, OP is occupant protection, DUI grants, it's 5,000. That's been consistent over the past number of years. Reports, that's also been pretty consistent. That's people, insurance companies ask for crash reports, affidavits and stuff like that that we, that we charge. Special detail, again, this, something we've not done in the past, we've talked about it, I put it in there more as a discussion piece, but it's something we want to start looking at doing for special events. That dollar amount there, I kind of put towards, it would be geared more towards the World Cup. We haven't had a lot of special events the last number of years because of COVID, and the downhill throwdown is probably the other big one that we've had in the past, with the skateboarding event. But that's kind of what it would cost. I put it at time and a half for the officers, their time, and that would offset their 40 hours would be geared towards normal patrol for the town of Killington. It's a private business, that would be time and a half for coverage for us to be up there.
So the two you're looking at for that would be World Cup and?
Downhill throwdown. I didn't include downhill throwdown on this because I think.
Did that happen this year?
No.
Okay.
So that's just pretty much for the World Cup.
But again, that's also the 5,300, 5,300, it's also a pass-through as far as budget goes.
Okay. Correct.
So if.
If we don't get it, we don't get it.
We don't get it.
Right, it's not a loss, it's not a, a loss. Going down to the expenses, again, it would be the pass-through, the special detail, police chief included, you know, that's going to be a small increase there. Full-time officers, I did that in hopes we're going to be adding another officer next year. So the money you see there is for three officers, okay?
So one additional officer will always stay in today.
Correct, correct. Let's see here, again, governor's highway safety, that's kind of a pass-through, that expense there. Overtime, I increased that a little bit just based on having a third officer. Legal, it's kind of inconsistent. Kept it just so we have something in that line item for any questions we may have for the town attorney. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, I decreased that a little bit. As we know, we have two new cruisers now, hope to get that, I think we're getting that third one. So repairs and maintenance should go down pretty substantially, actually. Right now, could be a lot higher.
What is the difference between vehicle repairs and maintenance and equipment repairs and maintenance?
So equipment is the equipment we have in the cruisers.
Okay.
Or the radar cart, for example, which is, it's another discussion Chet and I are going to talk about. Telephone internet, so like Chet mentioned earlier, I think you're going to start, Chet's going to start allocating that for each department, correct?
Yes.
So I had put it zero, but Chet had those numbers. I'm not sure what those numbers are because in the past I haven't seen.
And they did it out of population, and they broke that up, but we're going to, we're going to do that as a culmination sheet, so we can look at that as a separate item altogether.
Great. Answering service, I kept it the same as last year's 3,000. We've come close to that. I think our call volumes have increased, even our calls for service are coming into our office. So I think that's pretty fair and should be pretty accurate. Continued education, that's for police training. Some of the stuff is free through the police academy. We try to do as much free training as possible, but some stuff, it's nice to go outside of the academy and get some other additional specialized training. I increased that a little bit because we have additional officers. It'll be, next year, we'll have the two of Officer Roy here, and we'll have hopefully another, another one. Mileage, that's for personal vehicles. If for some reason we need to go personal vehicle somewhere, it kind of covers that.
So just in that light, you know, when we go to, if we go to a fourth officer?
Yes.
We're talking about sharing cruisers at that point?
Yes.
And, and so therefore, there will be some, there might be the need for a little more usage personally.
True, yeah, true.
Wouldn't you house one of them here?
Yeah, but right now, there's one being housed.
Okay, so you'd house one here, and then they drive to work.
Exactly. Well, yeah, you don't get it for that, but I'm saying there's, right now, they go. They might be going to training or, you know.
Or driving to the academy.
You're not talking.
Yeah. 200 bucks. Yeah, I don't think we ever even, I don't think we ever really even used that much in the past. Fuel, I did increase that based on.
An extra cruiser.
Yeah, based on the extra cruiser, and I did the math, so that should be pretty accurate. Computer-aided dispatch, in the past, it's been for CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatch. Now, with, state has now gone onto the same system we have, it's called ValCor. There's no charge for that, but I left 580, $580 in there for state emails, which state does charge for @gov, Vermont.gov emails. Let's see here, office rental, that's zero. Uniforms, radio supplies, it covers our uniforms, radios, supplies needed for, for the officers. Kept that the same as some officers, Officer Roy had a lot of his own equipment sometimes. Again, the police grant, equipment supply, that's the passive grant I talked about, $10,000. And again, that's kind of a, it's a wash, money in, money out. Office equipment, I put in $1,600 for, we're going to need another two computers and hard drive storage. That was a quick overview.
You know the telephone is going to keep on coming out.
No, I know that. Well, we, we've been emailing back and forth, and Mark and I have both been dealing with him, so we'll be answering.
I don't, I mean, it's.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. Well, from board, Chris?
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Just so you guys know, we have 139 additional calls this year at the exact time than we did last year. 139 calls.
Hundred, or plus 139 over a year.
Same, yeah.
How many calls did we have a year ago?
It was like 400 and something calls year to date.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't look at the end of year, but it's, I also didn't include the calls coming in from the, to the answering service.
And that's just called we respond to United States Police?
Correct. At the end of the year, I usually, my town report, I usually include the full, the calls that come into our answering service, plus the calls that we take, plus state police.
And what do you guys, what's the current schedule for coverage for town versus?
Sure, so we have day coverage now, where Officer Hoff usually works early mornings, and then I do afternoons, and then once Officer Roy is finished with his, you know, training as far as the traffic control, and he feels comfortable with the traffic detail stuff, he'll be filling in that third shift.
Okay.
One thing, you know, for anyone who does Airbnb, our call, calls have gone up a lot for drug-related issues, I think we've all seen in the papers. Tony's not been immune to that, our drug stuff has increased tremendously. Airbnb, you got to do a background check on, on the guests that are wanting to reserve your unit. We're having some repeat people that Officer Roy is familiar with in his past, and we've been familiar with in last year, that are back up here again renting Airbnbs, and it's generated.
They rent them for just short periods.
Distribution.
Oh, distribution purposes.
Yeah, that's part of it. In short term, it's, you know, two days, two nights, and then jumping from condo to condo. It's not so much houses that we've seen yet, but it's.
Distribution.
People, you got, you got, you know, if you don't have a local manager or housekeeper or something, you guys got to do your own background check, even Google a name, you'll be amazed what comes up on Google, just something.
Yeah, I know, I don't hire half the applicants because you start looking at their names and what they've done.
If they're making the local papers curtain, probably, yeah, try to skip over some of them.
Agreed.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for sitting around and waiting.
I'm going to sit back and listen to some of their stuff.
They're dressed, they're on the payroll.
Who's presenting fire department?
Well, I am.
You will? We're going to skip to fire department.
Sure.
We have Chris on the bottom right, I believe that's who that is.
Yeah, so the fire department has a, again, a full-time fire chief in the budget as it does for the current year. This is ValCor, and the hiring committee has, had made their choice, and we offered the job, and it's been accepted by Chris LaHart. He is currently about a month and a half from his retirement, when then he's going to begin working for the town of Killington. He has a tremendous amount of background, both related to the military and, and large and small fire departments and hybrid departments, which is what we would likely become at some point. So I wanted to introduce Chris. Chris is here. I thank you for sitting through this entire, entire event, but welcome to the town of Killington.
Thank you. Glad to be here. You guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Glad to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to continue my service with the town of Killington.
Chris, you want to just give an overview of where you, where you currently are and for those that are listening in?
Yeah, currently, I'm living in North Carolina, in a small city, Elizabeth City, North Carolina. I'm a New Yorker, northern New Yorker, Adirondacker. That's where I'm from, and I'm heading, heading, heading that way. I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to have visited, and I'm currently a battalion fire chief. I'm responsible for six fire stations, 47 employees. I'm the executive officer of a, of a shift. My fire department is currently, we're staffed at about 250 full-time employees, but it's, it's spread out geographically, excuse me, spread out geographically between, from Maine to North Carolina border and everything east of the Mississippi. So operationally, I work a 48-hour tour, then I'm off for 48 hours. And I'm responsible for the emergency and non-emergency operations of my battalion, which encompasses that six fire stations. I serve, I service approximately 100,000 employees, or citizens. I have two airports, I have two sets of peers, or two sets of, two sets of seaborne wharves, I guess is the best way to describe it in civilian terms, but it's 14 peers. Nuclear assets, not nuclear assets, weapon systems, things of that nature, has been my experience. I started out as a volunteer firefighter in 1986 as a junior, and I found my passion, and it was given to me by my dad. Lived in Connecticut for a while, graduated high school in Connecticut, joined the service, military veteran, Desert Storm, Southern Watch, some of my operations as an airman. I was in crash fire rescue in the military. So honestly, I'm just looking forward to getting up there and being part of the team.
So welcome to the town, Chris, and I know, like, through our interview and stuff that I sat through with, everything, you know, folks are going to say, well, you're a guy coming from the city, but how is he with the rural? So I, I believe you already asked that question, and you already have an answer for it to the public. You are involved in rural fire, correct?
Yes, and I am involved in rural firefighting in my current capacity. I have a, I have an whole area in the city of Chesapeake that isn't serviced, excuse me, isn't serviced by fire hydrants. I'm very familiar with tanker shuttles, shuttle operations, pump operations, land large lines, small lines to support water flow in a rural setting. I was stationed in Alaska, lived in New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, and I've experienced firefighting in the snow. I've actually cut holes in rivers, lakes, to pump water. I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with volunteer organizations. I was a volunteer officer, lieutenant captain. I, I have been a volunteer well in my paid status, but I've been away from the volunteer firehouse now for, well, since 2005. It's just not something that happens in this area. I was looking to join the volunteers, but Killington provided me a wonderful opportunity to do that. So I'll be back in, in service with volunteers. I don't see a distinction between volunteer and career. Everybody's a professional fireman, once you, you know, sign on the dotted line that you're willing to give your life, so. I'm willing to answer any questions that anybody has.
We'll leave it up to you guys, because I've already, I've turned the whole interview down, so it's impressive, you know.
Yeah. I'd like to say thank you, Chris, and we'll be seeing you shortly. I think you're coming up for a little visit?
Yeah, I'm trying to balance some work, home, life issues that would allow me to break free in November to come up. I have three more actual shifts that I have to perform duty. I'd like to try to visit my dad and swing through Killington and show my wife, but I've got some health issues with my wife that I'm trying to work out as far as appointments, and then be up that way.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Look forward to meeting you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to it, too. Appreciate the time that the town took as well to search, interview you, and host me. Very friendly, you know, mountain, mountain people are my thing, so I'm coming home.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question on the budget.
Just, just getting to the budget, just a brief overview. Pretty much, the only real change on the budget is the addition of one paid firefighter, which, as we slowly build, it's an EMT firefighter, so it's about a $45,000 add for that, but just wanted you to be aware of that as we go through the process. This is an additional staff member.
Mine has to do with equipment maintenance, goes, it's 40,000 budget, 3,200 actual, and it goes back to 40 each year on the maintenance part of it.
I gotta, I'll get you the history of that, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I know Mark has looked at all of those things with the five-year average, and I do have it here in my pile of budget stuff. So, we can, we can go through this, and I can get you that information, but it is an item that we can circle to come back to and verify.
We can't blame Chris for the budget, it hasn't really started yet, so...
And Chris, what I will do is, I will send you all of the background information I have along with the budget, just so you have it to glance at, you know, so you can, we can have a conversation, and you can kinda see how it's gone, and any questions you can have, and you can also talk to, to Tom Rock or the other officers as far as any historical data, and I know there's a bunch of people that are involved with equipment repairs, like I know Alan Naylor is the one who does, pretty much gets all the trucks serviced and things of that nature, so we can go through that process here over the next couple of weeks.
And prior to the start of this meeting, Chris, we met up with three of your soon-to-be officers, Tom Rock being one of them, his son, I forget his...
It's his son-in-law.
Son-in-law.
It's Josh.
Josh. And then...
Bob Schlaacke.
Bob Schlaacke. And I really can't wait to meet up with you and back you up, so...
Yep.
And I, I can't wait to get up there, too. I'm just looking forward to learning how they do things. I talked to Tom briefly on the telephone today, and told him that I wanted to look at the standard operating guidelines, and just try to get familiar with what's going on, as I try to come up with a, a direction, and then, you know, have something in my mind when I show up, and then working with Chet and the officers to kind of bring that vision forward, and what to get the town's goals accomplished.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll just...
Be available to you, just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll get back to us on Steve's question.
I circled that one, so we can answer that.
Can we skip to Lisa for the town planner?
Yeah.
She can go home after all these...
While we're on the fire department...
Oh.
While we're on the fire department, and we say we're splitting out all the costs on the telephone, but I don't see a price in here for the telephone, unless my line is messed up.
No, there was one, and then they took it out.
So, you know, but...
That's gotta be checked as well.
Okay.
I will get you a complete account.
Electricity's pretty cheap, too.
You know, yeah, electricity is $400 for the fire department, so, I mean, we just gotta go and make sure. I mean, I would really like to get at some point to where we're finding out what we pay for all phones...
All of it together. Well, that's why I want to give you a complete, but as far as the electricity goes, and the other, electricity...
That's the river road station?
Yeah, that's only the river road station, because electricity's under the public safety building line item.
Yeah, no, I know that, right. But, but that was because what we were doing was saying that we weren't going to be splitting, electricity was electricity, and phones were phones, but I just wanna make sure that we don't lose, I wanna know what we're paying totally for phones in this town, and to put it back out for a bid, to get somebody to do it for a price that we can do, that's all.
Just a, a quick response on the, the equipment maintenance, the $40,000 line item has been there for several years, and it's been 27,000, 25,000, and 34,000.
Yes, so just put a check mark next to there.
You know, so it's just one we wanna review. It does have a little bit of room, it's always had a cushion, but it's, the 3,000 was an anomaly.
Right.
Especially if they have to go into the woods again.
Right.
That always beats them up.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Where we going next, to Lisa?
Lisa?
Town planning?
Come on up, Lisa.
Planning and zoning budget, okay?
So, that's the planning and zoning.
It's the budget for both the planning and zoning department, as well as the planning commission, and it should read DRB, not ZBA.
Okay.
I've already made that change in our version, but somehow it didn't make a change in the town's version.
And one thing, that's an accounting perspective, that doesn't have any real bearing on this, but just so you know, when we always applied the revenues to...
Jerry Russell's trying to get in now.
Oh. As we tried to, when we applied all the revenues, it always went to planning commission and zoning board, where those are, that's the, the commissions and the boards, they don't have revenues. We're moving the revenue down to the actual department, which is the planner and zoning administrator, that's the actual planning and zoning department, and that's where the revenues would be, so that you can then look at that as a, as a complete package, but when you look at the, the sheet we've prepared for today, it's just revenue and expenses for each of the departments.
So I don't know if you just want me to run through changes? Obviously, the, the revenues are the revenues, we don't put in any money for zoning fines with this, we hope that we don't collect any revenues.
That we don't fine anyone.
Done pretty well, done pretty well, Lisa.
We want revenues, but we don't wanna get any fines.
I meant that we, we're not anticipating any fines, you know.
Now that we're talking about fines, just on a good note here, I did get a call from Susan Gallo, and she's having a baby in June.
There you go.
I didn't know if she was registered yet.
So, moving into the expenses, first of all, you'll notice legal, we've taken the legal out of the planning commission and DRB, and moved it into the, the staff, because again, we, you really can't separate it out, the lawyers serves both the commission as well as the staff, so we've just taken that out. Salaries and wages and planning commission and ZBA is just the stipends. Advertising, we've obviously upped it to kind of reflect what the actual cost is, I think we have a very ridiculously low number. I think that's something that, at some point, the select board needs to revisit, the fee structure, because right now, the advertising is costing the town more than we're actually taking in in permit fees.
I was just gonna ask that question, like, typically in the past, it's supposed to cover that. I don't think it's ever coveted.
It doesn't come close.
So a site, a site plan, to go through site plan, you have to warn the hearing, and it costs like $700, $800 to warn it in the paper, and a site plan review is $300. So I am gonna be coming forward with price changes on certain things, to make sure that at least we're covering our cost of the advertising and everything else in there. I mean, we're getting people coming in, like, I mean, I was telling somebody today that I think I put through 11 new homes to be built in Killington, single-family home sites, and, and they're all shocked that it's $300. It actually costs more than $300 to do that permit, to get everything right, so, so there will be some changes in the structure of the pricing coming out of zoning, I would say, in the new year, January, February, to go forward to, you know, this July, corresponding to July, so...
Yeah, so...
You know, I, I'd like to bring up, you know, when we have in the revenue side, the rental registration, you know, just once again, I mean, it's, it's, it's going from the budget of 2022 of 100,000, the actual was 116, and this was one of those items where it actually cost us more to implement and keep everybody in place, and so that is the rate increase there, and that fee is also going to offset some of the cost of the fire chief position, 'cause we've been very upfront about that, because the fire chief through his department will be doing some of these inspections on these short-term rentals, and have somebody be able to, to go out instead of counting on division of fire safety all the time. I would also like to say, if you take a look at this, and you see a planner, and a zoning administrator, and a administrative assistant, you know, and a planning consultant, you know, currently, it's Lisa and myself, and there's like four places there, so if some people are wondering why sometimes it takes 25 or 30 days to get a permit, you know, we, in this hard time of hiring people...
We're understaffed.
We're understaffed at this time, so we're hoping that changes next year.
So the administrative assistant, the new position, that's gonna be, the vision is that's gonna be shared with the town manager?
Yes.
So that's why the numbers...
Yeah, the other 225s on the town manager side, which it's been there currently.
And it looks like, I'm not sure, Chet, why you reduced contracted services, that's the, from 36 to 31, it was 36 in the budget, did you?
I think it was, we were having a conversation, and we weren't getting to the 36.
We weren't getting to it when we talked.
It was like 31, 31 seemed like a better number.
So if you looked at, the $36,000 is actually where everybody starts yelling about, you know, money going outside of the state for the short-term rental program, there's only 26,380, 385 cents going out on the new contract services. So instead of, there are more people added on, and I believe Muni Rev's charges per...
Per, yeah. It's the total number of units that are in there.
You hit certain things, so we upped it, we upped it a little bit more, like $5,000 more than what we had spent in the past on that contracted service.
And then, I think Jim covered the rest of the staffing, there's the $25,000 for a planning consultant, which I guess if you hire a planner, maybe you need a planning consultant, or maybe there's some special projects you want a planning consultant to work on, you know, it's hard for me to talk about it since it's me, but...
The question, the question becomes is, when you're, when we're doing, if we're, and this is just, this is the decision, is how we want it to actually work, you know, if you say ultimately, when we have a full-time planner, okay, they're doing the town work, and our planning consultant would be doing some town work, but then might be doing special projects where, which are coming from a different funding source, so the question is, you know, is there any, any duplication or overlap, or is there anything we wanna look at there? And that's just the question.
Well, I think we have a person that's sitting here at the table with us, that's putting her heart and soul in here.
Oh, I agree.
And no, and what I'm getting at is, the position's not going away as long as you'd like it, there's always going to be, when we start getting into this Killington Forward program, you know, there, there's work here for, and I'd just like to say, you're doing a great job, and I don't want to, you know, lose or whatever, and don't get into, you know, the positions there, it's just like...
Yeah, it's just how you want it to be reflected in the budget.
Well, we wanna, we wanna have the planning consultant line item, it's just how do we wanna say the number is, because it, let's assume that you're, we don't, we don't have a planner, as we don't right now, well, we might be charging, going slightly over budget on what you're doing, if we had 15,000 in it, or whatever the number was, but we're not paying the planner, so we're still under on the overall, so it's just when, when they're all in place, what do we want it to look like?
Right, exactly, no, I get that, now you're way under because we don't have a planner.
And I'm just gonna, once again, say that even though we say it's a planning consultant, okay, in this spot here, working alongside Lisa, okay, she's an employee to me, and I hope the rest of the board realizes she's an employee to us, it's just the way that that is put into there as a consultant, and you're an employee in my mind, so, you know, and this is a budget, so if it goes over for special projects, we go over.
Right.
If there's funds that come in, like Witt talks about, offsetting for whatever, then there's funds, and some of that could be grant stuff that comes in.
Yeah, but she's sitting here writing grant, putting grants together for us, so...
I mean, Lisa is putting her heart and soul into this, and I appreciate, I appreciate all your work, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I live here, so I have the best of interest in this thing.
It's all good?
Yes, you do.
So the only other thing I don't know if we wanna discuss, is the planning commission special projects?
That's gonna go in...
That's in the capital line, that's in the capital, which we do the next meeting.
We haven't even hit all that.
Okay, so you just know that Jennifer made a request, that's...
Right.
We have that, we gotta go in, and then, we're gonna do that kinda stuff in a, in a daytime meeting, where we'll get into what's with planning and Jennifer, so, thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I miss the zoning? I hear you did.
Oh, we did that.
Well, basically, we, we, we did the hea, we opened the hearing, and he read what the changes were, answered a couple of questions, it's now continued as the whole group is, for consideration of the complete package on December 12th.
So we didn't wanna do it right after World Cup. Some people know it as World Cup, some people know it as Thanksgiving. It's all right.
Don't worry.
My wife make it?
She had a great time.
Yeah, she's an animal on that stuff, she loves it. She's gonna do the winter time, too.
Okay, where do you...
We had eight women.
And what's left?
No.
Okay, she's gonna get her going.
Uh, just a group hike, yeah, get more rest of them.
What do we got next?
Town manager. Let's kill this one. So, the big, the big changes this year are, we took, we eliminated the interest expense as a line item, because we don't take out short-term loans anymore, and the other item is, we doubled the amount for advertising, because we have needed that for multiple different things, so it's basically, the advertising is what it, what's primarily increased the budget, other than that, it's all basically the same.
So, we have talked on advertising at some point here of saying, we have so much going on in the next 18 months or whatever, and I, I believe, I actually even showed a example, the board had brought up, and I think Chris might even mentioned it, too, or whatever, you know, looking at, we advertise in the Mountain Times, okay, to get word out and everything, and they are working with our public relations company, which is putting things into them, but if you take, you know, I just wanna make sure that the 10,000 is enough, because if you take in the 52 weeks, and let's just even say it's like 750 or whatever, you know, 52 weeks times 750 bucks, that's, 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 that's $39,000.
Well, the thing to keep in mind is, all of the money related to, let's say, the TIF advertising would technically be going to the TIF expense.
I would just wanna make sure that TIF allows us to...
So we need to look at it the whole, yes.
I just wanna make sure that TIF allows us, because, because the idea of this one-page article is, of taking it is, is that we can put in there what's going on in the rec department, what's going on in zoning, what's going on in TIF, and what's going on maybe with something, so TIF is not going to be paying for...
Right.
What's going on in zoning, and, or the senior citizens, or whatever.
So, that's a $700...
Yeah, a week, yeah, it's, it's up there. Even if it's 600, you talk...
Well, 'cause we're sitting down with the Mountain Times.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna say, because if this is what I think it is, or we talk about like having a police blotter again, and having like the...
I don't think that's in there, that part, they, they do that on their own for free.
Okay, so this is just...
This is what we need to get out for announcements, okay?
And, and on a weekly basis, going forever?
Weekly basis, going, moving forward for the next year.
Okay.
And, you know, it's just what, what content we want in for a particular week, and to me, I think that for the Mountain Times, if we were to sit there and say, we're gonna commit to X amount of space every week for a year, the rate's gonna be better, for one, and I think we'll gain more space.
Okay.
You know, so I just wanna make sure, $10,000, I mean, we, we already, for actual 2022, we already spent 9,100, and now we're talking more, and, you know...
Well, we have to look at all the different, like, departments and how we're doing that, so...
Yeah, but, but, but it's in this advertising line or whatever, this is in the town manager's budget, as you're saying, that's not...
There's a rec line item, there's a...
Right.
So what about recruitment?
That's all under the town managers, the recruitment.
So the 9,100 is your recruitment?
Yes, pretty much.
Okay.
So we're spending a lot more on that, I just wanna make sure we're doing it...
We should.
Well, there's, there's also the 1,900 that was for the, what's it called, the GRIP or whatever, that one magazine, we did it with $1,900. The GRIP or whatever, that one magazine, we did it with nineteen hundred dollar one for that.
But then there's also the World Cup that you're in.
Right.
Okay, but that doesn't fall underneath rec, that doesn't fall...
No, those don't, no.
Whatever, that, that's in the town manager, and I just think that, you know, this board is saying that we have this Killington Forward moving forward, pun intended, and, uh, you know, we want to make sure that, um, when we get into August or September, that we're not being told that we're already over budget because I was just going to say, we came up with a plan, we're following the plan, find it elsewhere. So let's make sure on that number you put an asterisk on it.
Yeah.
That's all. And I see the administrative assistant is the other half of what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, legal services, yeah, bank charges, whatever, the cell phone, whatever, okay, the dues, there's no dues coming out of...
Well, there, there's...
Where does VLCT come out of?
That's, that's, that's in a different line item, the VLCT.
What line item is it in?
We have the insurance.
Okay.
The insurance piece, but there's also, the other piece that used to also include, um, things like the, was it Retic?
Yeah.
And we moved that to the appropriations, we moved those over to a different location. So there, they weren't truly dues, they were actually...
Yeah.
Other fees and appropriations.
Continuing education, what is continuing education for a manager?
I mean, and sometimes it's going to a conference and things like that, you know, I hadn't, I didn't go this, I haven't gone yet this year, um, to a paid conference, but that's just the line item we leave in there for that.
Okay.
Those type of things, because there's usually, there's some two-day conferences that are fairly local.
Okay. And then subscriptions are just...
Miscellaneous subscriptions such as, you know, we, we have to pay for the Rutland Herald, there's different ones we pay for.
Okay. And then you get your mileage.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can just take a look and to make sure that we're, I want to make sure we're doing...
Got enough advertising.
Well, on everything, you know, I just want to make sure that we're doing that right.
Yeah, but I think you put together a number that, what we're spending and then, and sit down and approach them.
Yeah, they are waiting for us to, to, to approach them, to sit down and talk, whatever.
If you take a full page out with them, does that also include digital or is that print only?
You know what, eh, we need to sit down with them and I think they'd be willing to agree a whole, I think they would rather us do something that has digital and, you know, automatically it does, the paper goes to digital, but I think they have a bigger product for us to take a look at...
Yeah.
That they can do some daily updating to, and they wouldn't mind doing that or whatever. So I'm just telling you folks that we have a lot, a lot of good stuff in front of us, and then I'm going to give these two other guys here, it is a, like, I've been on not just select board, but planning commission board, down in Rutland Regional, I've been in school boards or whatever, these two guys that are sitting here, you know, on this board here, we're all on the same page and it's a pleasure working with them, we, we all are looking to better the town of Killington and, and really stick to the Killington Forward name for the better of the community. So, don't I say I would give you two a compliment?
Wow.
Throwing a lot of compliments out.
Mark down the date on that one.
You're getting compliments, you're giving compliments.
But yeah, just take a look at those two there, what's up next?
So you're going to, you're going to put all these numbers together on the final...
This is just our first one.
Yeah, I know, that's, I agree, that's...
He hasn't gone highway yet.
Yeah.
Oh, highway.
So highway doesn't have any revenue, obviously.
Too bad.
Yeah, right.
Toll booth.
Toll booth, there you go. Basically, Mark spent quite a bit, Mark and I spent quite a bit of time, Mark more than me, getting all the, the five-year actuals for all these numbers, and this year, uh, we've basically been rebalancing some of the numbers, um, it has caused some of the numbers to go up, but, you know, examples of some of the changes like line striping, we did put in for two rounds, even though we haven't gotten our first one yet, but they promised me by the end of this week again, um, to get that, and we were...
Great, great time.
Yeah, right?
Especially if it snows tomorrow.
Yeah, shovel the snow off to get the paint out.
Yeah, right. So, so that was one item, we also have been spending a little bit more in, in gravel repair with fixing roads and stuff after washouts, um, we spent thirteen thousand dollars at the end of fiscal twenty-two, so we upped it from seven to twelve on our budget. Um, we've also increased the sand budget by five thousand dollars, and some of that's just due to cost increases. Um, on the facilities maintenance side, basically, um, buying new equipment, and the new equipment is, is mostly, um, electronics and computers and things of that nature, and our contracted technical services because we're looking to move to a different, uh, computer IT program and somebody that's, you know, taking care of that for the town. Traffic control devices, the biggest change was just in repairs and maintenance, with the costs have been up, uh, it worked for last year, eight forty-nine, but the year before we had over like five thousand dollars and we put the, the five thousand dollar line item in there.
This is, oh, for, this is all just traffic?
That's just traffic control devices.
Do we budget ahead at all for capital when they go?
We have been putting, please don't quote me, right on twenty thousand a year, fifteen or twenty thousand a year away for that...
Okay.
To, to start to build up a fund for, for replacing those. Um, the unfortunate part is the price of, of a, a new intersection has gone up to like three hundred or three and a quarter, um, to replace an intersection like that from a traffic control perspective, so, um, it is something that we will have to look at how we're funding that. You know, it, we, it was a high priority in my mind five, six years ago, and then once we've done some of the work and, and, uh, the company we use now to, to maintain that, um, has said that right now our system doesn't have a short lifespan, we're in an okay place, we did some upgrades, and we're kind of in a good place, and we're not in a hurry, um, but it is something that I will argue will definitely be part of the upgrade, uh, when Killington Road is reconstructed because we're going to be changing lane widths, it's going to change the location of those poles anyway.
Yep.
So all of that hopefully will come to pass in the next five, six years.
So I have a question on page two on the town garage.
Yep.
Second column is actual for two thousand twenty-two, period twelve. So telephones were six hundred dollars, hate to keep on hitting on telephones, but now we're going to thirty-eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
That telephone was strictly stipends at the time, okay, and now they're reallocating the, the, the numbers all over, so like I said, I'm going to give you just a telephone breakdown so that you can see it per, per location.
So, so is the thirty-eight sixteen including the six hundred dollar stipend?
Yes.
So it's thirty-two hundred and sixteen dollars...
For the year.
For the year, divided by twelve. Once again, I mean, like, what do they have in there for two hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a telephone system? It just...
I know, I will circle it and we will, I will give you all the detail, okay?
So then I go to electricity, and I see that we spent two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents in two thousand twenty-two, and now we're budgeting six thousand? I mean, I thought we got the solar thing, I, I, I thought we just, electricity on the library wasn't going up much, but how did they go up three times? So just put an asterisk there?
Yeah, no, I circled that one so we can, we, so the utilities we have to revisit as we're reallocating, and the propane is just based on actuals.
Right, okay, so the propane is based on the dollar sixty-nine a gallon times the...
No, it's, that's based on actual usage, now we got to do the, the calculation at the new number.
Yeah, because I think you were paying last year like over two dollars a gallon or whatever.
We were paying two, twenty-two thirty.
Yeah, so it's going to be gallons and take it down from there.
Yep.
But just come back on that, for me on that there.
Yeah, basically utilities, I gotta, we gotta come back and we gotta do a little revisiting.
So let's go back to page one, we're actually really going to get line striping twice a year. If you take a look at the bill that Ricky had gotten just to do one striping for, from L and D of the lines that haven't been done yet, was around thirty thousand dollars. I'm not kidding you, highway maintenance or whatever.
Normally, we've been paying between sixteen and eighteen thousand a unit, I'll have to go check that number.
You know, um, is Ricky had, for, what is he underneath, maintenance or highway?
Highway.
Highway, is his email?
Oh, town garage. Garage at.
So you're, you're saying it's going to be another, how much did we do the striping before winter?
I'm telling you that, um, if I can find, what is Ricky's email?
It's under town garage.
Well, I'm in my email here, so if I do town...
It's garage at, I think.
Well, it's not town garage.
That's garage at.
Where's the striping for?
Roads.
All of them?
All of the ones that get striped.
I had to find it, but Ricky had put it out back in like whatever, July, for L and D to come out, and it was over thirty thousand, it was, it was thirty-two thousand dollars for all the yellow and all the white, not the crosswalks, not the stop stuff. It was six thousand dollars or seven thousand dollars for the cross and, and crosswalks and the stop sign stuff areas, and, um, that would be L and D's price, over six thousand dollars just to do it once, and we have Cory coming in from, um, what is it called again? Line striping guy that I found, and he's doing two times for us a year for little less than what they were on the...
One time.
At one time. But the, I'm telling you that the yellow lines that we need done and the white lines so we can even know that we have two lanes, the price was over, um...
I will check that tomorrow.
Thirty thousand dollars per time. I think what we were hoping is that we get one free from that, but that never happens. And I'm just going to lead that into is that there is a, a machine that's about thirty-four, thirty-six thousand dollars that Cory would like to talk to us about, and, um, we would own the machine and he can use it or whatever and do it.
Looking at Pia and it's...
Oh, yeah, she's resting.
The computer's facing someone in bed.
Yeah.
They just rolled over.
Yeah, it's Pia.
Sorry, Pia.
They're that boring.
You know, so anyway, um...
Oh, yeah.
Turn your video off, Pia. I was at a school board meeting the other day on Zoom and some lady started undressing to go into the shower, didn't realize it.
Okay. But, but anyway, we got to talk...
How are other towns getting their lines striped and we're not?
According to, when I talked, I finally got L and D on the phone, uh, last Monday or Tuesday, they said that basically they haven't gotten to all their towns, they're still, they're getting ready to do Burlington right now, like Burlington hadn't gotten their striping that they were supposed to get, according to them. So it's, there, people are getting it, but I don't know what, how they're picking their order.
Why don't we ask?
Well, I did, and I said, he told me, well, I apologize for this and we will get to you, I said, because not only are you telling us you were going to be here last July, we then, you, you gave me a date of October tenth, you didn't come, then you don't respond to any emails or phone calls, you know, and actually the only reason I got them on the phone was because I called their business office and I started complaining to them, and then they put me through to somebody where all the other phone lines you go straight to voicemail.
Should we, um, look at another company in New Hampshire?
Yeah, I mean, there's, the, the only company that, that has expressed any interest in it and I still never got a proposal from was from Massachusetts, um, but yeah, we, we need, and to be honest, what we should, we're going to probably have to do probably even in December, you know, I didn't want to do it until they actually, if we have a chance of getting them, um, but just advertise it everywhere for a line striping for the town of Killington and, and the number of feet that we do and how we're doing it and, and see if we can get somebody to bid on it just randomly.
It's crazy.
I can tell you it's seventeen cents per lineal foot and whatever, and you divide that by the, um, amount of lineal, you know, the, the thirty-eight, thirty, call it thirty-two thousand dollars, okay?
Seventeen cents a foot?
Thirty, seventeen cents, lineal foot divided by point one seven, it's about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand lineal feet, which is probably right on, you, you got over a hundred thousand, I believe, of white and, because white is more...
How much is just, how many square, how many feet did you say?
What, about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand lineal feet?
Killington Road, seventy-eight thousand.
Okay, so, seventy-eight thousand is the lineal footage?
Of striping.
Of striping? And you got, um...
It's not crosswalks, though, right?
No, no, you got West Hill Road.
Eighty-eight thousand?
But is that...
Seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy-eight.
Is that just for like yellow or does it include the whites?
No, that's all, that's all five, it's five stripes.
Okay.
Um, times fifty-two eighty.
I wonder if the resort uses, they, is it them up there?
Uh, they got, they did it this year, we actually did the resort last year. We got up there before them.
Forty-five thousand if we do East Mass road.
I mean, I think the big safety concern is the Killington Road.
Right, I agree.
You're over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand lineal feet.
Well, just those roads right there, I'm at one fifty-five thirty-two.
Yeah, so I'm saying...
Probably the hundred and seventy probably includes Schoolhouse Road.
Yeah, whatever.
Seventeen cents a foot's ridiculous, though, that's the number I...
You got a quote from, um, L and D.
Okay.
So, so that's that.
Okay.
Let's just, let's just check on those few things.
Yep, yep.
We did highway, we did town management police, we did town planner, okay? We have Susanna here, and I think she's waiting for...
Get this out of there.
Yeah, so can we just, Suzanne, if anyone doesn't know, Suzanne is with, you want to introduce yourself, Suzanne?
Hi, sure, I'm Suzanne Karist, and I work with Juniper, which is a communications firm out of Charlotte, and we are so pleased to be working with the town of Killington on a couple of projects, and so I've enjoyed sitting in and listening to your...
Really?
...for the coming year, I'm excited to hear what, uh, Chris is going to be sharing with you.
So we've hired Juniper on partially, uh, mostly for the project that we're doing, so we get out the right communication to, to everybody, and, um, we're bringing on for some other things, and, um, you know, I'm gonna, one of the, um, other businesses would be, um, or for, for the budgets, since we've done all the other budgets, Chris is going to go over through what we're looking at of trying to, one of the items we're looking to do to get into the budget this year.
Yeah. So, um, back in twenty nineteen, uh, town did a facility study, and, uh, the town in, in management determined it's important to consolidate all the town services and have everything under one roof. Um, they also looked at, uh, creating space to enhance year-round youth and, uh, senior programming. So this is all supposed to start in twenty twenty-five, as it was written into this, your sustainable budget, I've done, and, um, since that point a little earlier, an opportunity's come up for the town, uh, that we think is a, a great move for the town, the board discussed it at length, we've done some due diligence on it, we've, uh, worked, you know, spoken to the commission, uh, planning commission about it, um, seeking some funds from them, but we've entered into agreement to purchase the Killington post office and relocate the town offices there, um, still with the post office being there, and, um, allowing that route to come to us. The other side of the winning part of the project would be to take the town offices as they sit right now and let those become a youth and senior center for, um, the kids within our town. Um, the, uh, when did you go, in June for the money, where you went to the planning commission?
Yeah, um, the project became available somewhere in June or July, and I visited the, um, planning commission in an executive session. We do have that fund that we were talking about with Lisa, that's called special projects, so...
So, um, as it stands, a new building would be purchased for one point two million
So, um, as it stands, a new building would be purchased for one point two million from the Koch family on or before April fourteenth of twenty twenty three. The acquisition is built into the current budget and does not require a special bond or a separate ballot item. But residents should be aware that this is, um, they consider this when they vote for this year's budget. It'll be built into it. The plan is to finance the purchase over five years and pay it off very quickly. Utilizing a lot of the rent revenue that comes in from the post office to actually pay for the indebtedness of it. If you basically, as I sat and did the math of talking to Jim earlier, it boils down to we're purchasing this building at a hundred and eighteen dollars a square foot. We couldn't renovate anywhere near that, so.
So, uh, is the post office just remaining in that area?
Yeah.
And then it becomes a revenue generator?
So this property.
Because they will continue to pay rent.
Well, the property is up for.
I'm sorry, I I got too many questions.
The property went up for sale. Originally, like what Chris had said, we were looking in previous boards, Steve, myself and Patty, I think at the time. All right, to start doing this in two thousand and twenty five physical year. We are working on the two thousand and twenty four budget currently. When we were looking at the two thousand and twenty five to take on a new town hall somewhere and building it, it would cost us way more than one point two million dollars to purchase that building. So now you're purchasing the building for one point two million. We are going to be working on the budget and working with the numbers in the budget to make the increase very minimal and in a regular like what we normally do. What makes this project really good is is that there is a fifteen year lease with the federal government that gets renewed every five years, I think, for another five years on top, so it stays fifteen. And, um, it's basically paying, I believe, now around seventy two.
Seventy two thousand.
Seventy two thousand dollars a year. So for the first five years, we're gonna be putting somewhere around three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars towards this payment. We have other budget items that are coming off of or other bonds that are supposed to come off in two thousand and twenty five, okay? But we also have, you want to go into a chat with the?
This this year, because we had such a significant increase on the on the, um, options tax. And in addition to the fact that when we made a shift, when we refinanced the golf debt, we bought a year where we didn't have to pay a payment. So we have three hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of carryover for the fiscal year twenty two. So we're able to bridge the gap for the one year early using the carryover funds to get to the point where we then have most of the rest of this money coming off three other bonds for the twenty twenty five year to be able to pay this debt without increasing taxes.
And then after the five years that this notice paid off, there's seventy two thousand dollars a year revenue coming to the town. Plus whatever the increase.
I I have one question. You got the post office. How many offices are there where where Bossworks was? There's one. How many more are there? Two more?
There's there's two spaces currently. The walls can go in and out, okay? Because they're not part of the structural integrity. And then there's the entire upstairs that's split up into two.
Eleven thousand square feet.
Upstairs a lot?
Yes.
Or SP land.
Lot of space upstairs.
The backside.
SP lands the backside, which is about twenty five hundred square feet.
Sure.
And then there's Cliff's Cliff Koch's storage unit. That that's about.
Another twenty five hundred.
But not, no, it's bigger than it's bigger. It's about twenty eight hundred to three thousand square feet back there. You know, we're we're working with an architect and everything to figure this out. We believe that you'd have the vault and the town clerk's office. Where you're talking about next to the post office, there was Bossworks and the next one over was Alpine Bike Shop at one point. So that would open up and become the clerk's office and, um.
Reception. It'd be a reception area where you commit.
And the vault.
It will also. But you'd also allow for the the upper level could be sufficient office spaces for everybody. Currently, if they've been in the town office, you'll notice that they, um, there's no there's no zoning person. Uh, zoning person and planning person can't be there at the same time because they don't have enough desk space.
We have one little five foot circle.
So it's it'll.
Appreciate it.
And as we expand upon it, um, it opens up, I think, for us to, you know, bring in the sufficient staff necessary to for everything going on within the town.
Is there is there a way to put a staircase in or is it exists to go off to the second floor?
We're working right now on that project as well. The other the other side of it that I think is also, um, exciting too is that, you know, the town hall remains within the current building, remains within the town, okay? And becomes, um, a nice, you know, center for seniors and for our youth. We, you know, you guys have looked at the, um, you know, what to do with the recreation area of the past. This could tie it all in nicely. At the same time period, you know, when there's a, I I know it from my own standpoint with my kids. When a thunderstorm hits, okay, in the middle of summertime, they go racing towards the town hall and take over the basement right next to the listers as they're trying to get things done. And it's chaotic.
So you move the listers up there too?
The only that building will become senior citizens and rec.
That's it.
That's it. So the rec department will still be working out of this building because that's where all the facilities and the and the grounds are going to be.
Makes sense.
I mean, the the board has been looking, this this board here that I sit with and the town manager, we're we're still like, we're always trying to think ahead and we're thinking to the two thousand and twenty five. I don't know which one of us, it was all of a sudden this property came up for sale and we all were like, why don't we look at this thing? And then we ran numbers and we're like.
When you ran numbers and looked at there's seventy two thousand dollars.
We're looking at about, by the time we even do the renovations that we have to do, you're looking at half the cost. It's gonna be amazing.
Were you guys preaching today and preaching to the choir? Because I'm with you.
But we're, I I think Chris and I at the same time, when we were in a meeting, one of the executive sessions for real estate, executive session for real estate, because we're allowed, we're like, well, listen, if the town people don't want to buy it, then I'm buying it. It's seventy two thousand dollars a year. It's triple net with the post office. They pay their taxes, they pay their heat. It's separate heat for their separate electricity meter there. This is like a no brainer. So we're putting it into the budget and we're gonna come out and we're working on the budget to find out what the cost will be. And like any year, guys, there's always some type of increase in the percentage. I think when we're finished with this, you're gonna be blown away to find out that we have a fire chief, a deputy chief, a new building, not only just a new building for town hall, but rec slash the senior citizen slot that Jerry Russell has always been asking us for, okay? And the rest of you seniors. And and I just, it's like, oh, my God. I hope you guys say no. Not really.
Yeah.
I mean, the building is unbelievable.
I've been upstairs, I've been downstairs.
I think the other part, Andy, that I, you know, has thought about this long too, it really gives a a much greater sense of arrival to Killington too.
Exactly what I told my wife, exact same.
Now, all of a sudden, you know you've hit the town of Killington.
Town center.
And you have the ability to do some research on a project and walk next door and get a cup of coffee. You know you've hit Killington. And so I think it really.
Where's the town center?
It has so much sense for us to do.
Just to have town hall on that road is where it should be. I mean, it's certain place, it's a certain purpose where it was or is now, but that's long gone.
I think I hear Andy saying just raise his house up and he'll take care of it. You want to get into the rest of that?
Did you hear that?
Like a center of the town and all that other.
Did you hear that? He said he'd pay for his line striping for four years.
No, no, I said I'd pay him.
You pay him.
He didn't say he'd pay for.
I thought he said he'd pay.
Anyway, just to kind of finish off the statement, so we go, so the purchase is a win win. This facility has plenty of space to maintain the post office and all town offices as well as a welcome center to the town of Killington. And it currently frees up the town office spaces on River Road to become a recreation and gathering space for youth and seniors. Okay, so, um, we just really feel that this is a a perfect choice for, you know, welcoming the new town hall and gateway for the residents and the visitors as they roll into town.
I got worried this this morning. I it was amazing. I think I wanted to do that. And then I thought, it's really being here on the fourth, the seventh floor, seventh floor.
I think it'll be great, especially as we.
They got a hundred and eighteen dollars a square foot. That's building. That's not including the land, okay? We built this building for what?
Five point two.
How big is this building?
Purchasing the land?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
How how much, how many square feet is this building?
Just under fourteen thou- three hundred and seventy one dollars a foot approximately.
Four hundred dollars a square foot.
You know.
Hundred and eighteen. We're in a good position with it and. You gotta you gotta put the seniors.
World class resort.
What?
You gotta put the seniors downstairs, though, so they can go around the side because those those are some steep, steep wide stairs.
Where?
Where?
At town hall.
He's saying to put them downstairs.
Yes. Please to get the youth upstairs.
Oh, it's a ramp.
I'm looking out for you guys.
Carrying the donuts.
So, but I mean, is there any questions in the re-audience? Are there any comments or questions on the Zoom people? I thought I saw, did Jerry already quit?
Yeah, Jerry quit.
And she said COVID.
Oh, she does.
We're not gonna go blast that out publicly. Oh, my gosh.
That's too bad. I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions or whatever here?
I think at this point, everyone's like.
Yeah.
Tired of your stock.
This, I will say, the senior group is growing. And there's a bigger senior group in the summers than there is in the winter, but the winter group is growing. So the people are retiring back to their ski houses instead of.
It's true, but at the same time, Andy.
Get out of New York.
The same time, our youth is growing too. Years ago, Killington couldn't, you know, field a team. And now they're feeling a couple teams and to split them up because there's not many kids. So we need it on both sides and, you know, it'd be great for them to have, for seniors to have a space and and actually enter, you know.
Yeah.
With the kids and our youth. So it'd be great.
I used to live in San Jose, California. I skied on a great mountain that used to be called Squaw Valley and now is called Palisades. Okay, um, there was a sign there that, um, there was a kids season pass price or or day passes. Anyone underneath ten and over seventy was considered a kid and you ski for free.
Yeah.
So when I say kids, anyone over seventy, you're still a kid there, Andy.
I just became a senior citizen, so.
Yeah, yeah, I was sixty. I mean, you know, we we're just coming out with this today in the budget. We're really working on and and trying to keep the, um, increase, um, for this two thousand and twenty four budget with normal increases that we've had in the past and working with the sustainable. But in twenty five, it's even gonna, there'll there'll be the other things that will drop off that, you know.
That will not make up the difference for not having the as big a carryover.
Yeah, so so just wait for us to finish the budget and and get to you. But I think you'll be really like, oh, my God, this is, it's amazing.
Well, it opens up a lot of possibilities for day programming for seniors. And there are, there's a need for that. We have them through the wide border right now, a lot of programs there. And that can be enlarged and moved over.
Hundred percent.
Okay. All right, but we, you know, it got to the point where we we're into the budget. We did this stuff in the executive session under real estate and, um, we want to do a release it tonight. So a lot of stuff going on in this town right now, this county.
To add to it, do we have a delinquent tax sale? Well, this is just the, um, we have, or is that the procedure?
Before we before we go into that, Susanna, you know, if you got anything to say, you can, but you don't have to listen to our delinquent tax sales.
Unless you want to buy something.
Thank you. I thought I saw a hand up, um, from the Zoom audience, somebody named.
Oh, yeah, there he is. Yeah, T and D zone.
I didn't want to interrupt. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Great. Uh, the new location that you're talking about, the town hall, will it have enough capacity in terms of bathrooms uh, for the public to use instead of the porta jocks that are presently lined up outside of the Killington Deli?
You know, I was gonna actually say something about that. It will be a it will be a town hall and I envision putting a bathroom or two in there that people even still use from the public, the bathroom at town hall on River Road.
Yeah, when they're gonna go hiking, they come in and use the town hall restroom.
So the town hall, every town hall should have a public restroom. And if somebody comes in, they're able to use it.
Right.
Okay, good. And I think the, uh, reuse of the town hall as the senior center would be great. But if they're all, the seniors are gonna use downstairs, uh, they all need bathrooms down there.
Well, there is a bathroom down there, but but on the other hand, we're not designing the building right now, Matt. We may make them go upstairs so there's a two bathrooms up there.
Okay.
Let's not get it, let's not get into designing the building yet.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Matt's almost a senior citizen, so he's concerned.
Kill me, keep me up this morning.
Back to you, Susanna.
I'm all set. I'm so glad that people are responding so positively. It sounds like a great project and I look forward to working with you on it.
Thanks a lot, Susanna.
Thank you.
Take care. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
We still got hours to go. Oh, my God.
So so basically, right now, um, we we have applied in the past the rule, you know, an unwritten rule of, you know, anything that was over two years old and more than twenty five hundred dollars, um, because it costs us more in legal fees to go through some of that. Um, in that case, we have about a dozen, uh, properties that qualify for a potential tax sale. Basically, we have a, we have a town tax sale policy which calls out that and which we are planning to do actually tomorrow, if the select board so chooses, is to send out a letter to all of the people that are on this list, giving them thirty days um, to bring their account current or develop a payment plan that's accepted. Um, or we will begin tax sale procedures.
Do we bill them to show them on a basis of what their penalties and interests are?
Yes, they get it monthly.
They get a monthly statement.
They've been getting it monthly since the first time they were at Delinquent.
When you go to a tax sale on a property, there is a percentage that you have to put in for, um, legal. So, um, it is best that when, since we're talking to the public, it's best that when you receive this letter to come in to the town manager as the tax collector and work out a payment plan so you don't get some, um, lawyer fee that by statute gets added to the bill.
Yeah, when we start that procedure at the thirty days is when we start incurring those expenses. And actually, I have the meeting on Wednesday with our attorney to start to get this process started.
And the list that you have in front of you goes back, it doesn't count this current year or last year?
Correct. The list I'm working from is anything from the tax year, we're in tax year twenty twenty two, from the tax year twenty twenty and before. Okay, but when we actually, in order to bring your account current, you still have the twenty one and twenty two tax years. So what the actual bill or tax sale amount would go would include everything. But this is just to determine who we're sending those letters to.
And is there anything with COVID that stops?
Well, this is the first year we, starting, I think it was in the spring where they said they weren't telling us not to do tax sales. So it just it just happened.
So you're talking about how many properties?
There's a, there's a, I believe it's a dozen right now that qualify.
And the total dollar amount on property taxes?
Total dollar amount.
Without those other two years.
That's just one. It's it's in the four hundred thousand dollar range, three three thirty two.
So that's three hundred and thirty two thousand. That's more than two years old currently.
Correct.
And then you'll be adding in the other.
The other two years, correct.
Okay, and that's just on taxes.
That's just on taxes.
Is there sewer stuff involved in this also?
Yes, there are two properties that are. Yes, there are two properties that are, are in arrears with, delinquent with the Route 4 sewer. One of those is for about 340,000, and the other is for 11,000.
Now, that money goes directly to.
To the sewer.
Sewer district.
District, correct.
But here's one thing, like, starting this process, if they're more than three years late, really, okay?
Well, the, the one, the biggest sewer, one of the biggest tax one, go back to 2014.
Right, but, but out of the 12 or whatever is more than three years, at least three years late, and you're going to be adding probably another 40 or 50K onto that 332.
Correct.
And the town has a policy in place, and we need to enforce it because other people are paying taxes to, you know, to go from, to, to keep this going. And, and once again, I mean, I'm hoping that anyone, when they get this letter, comes in and makes a payment plan that works.
In 2019, we sent out about 12 or 14 of these letters. We had about seven not respond, seven went to tax sale, of which three redeemed at the last minute, and I think four actually went to tax sale. One did not sell, three did.
Okay. So, do you need a motion to move forward with the?
Well, I'm just, basically, I don't, I don't necessarily need a motion, because what will happen is, at the end of the 30 days, I'm basically telling you, I'm going to send these letters out in the next two days. When the letters are going to go out, they're going to go out certified mail. At the end of the 30 days, then I will be, so at the December meeting, I will be bringing you a warrant for you to sign to authorize me to go do the rest.
Thank you.
Under manager's report, I only have one thing to talk about tonight. We did hire a rec director, for the rec director and after-school program. Her name is Emily Hudson. She's actually started part-time, she'll be starting full-time after January 1, but she's been working a couple days, early mornings, a couple days a week to get acclimated. She's been meeting with the school. She's already started the process of getting her, all of her paperwork in line with the school district, and she's working on the finalizing of, of the licensure so she can start the after-school program. Sarah is also helping her, she, because she's been delayed for her, her ending, so it's, it's worked out well. We're getting her some, some preliminary information, and, and we're all very excited, and I think she's going to be a great addition to the town.
Where is she from?
She actually lives in Rutland Town. She works in Killington now.
She's already announced that she's leaving and coming here. She's been running a program at Killington Mountain School, and she comes with a lot of high recommendations.
I just met her this weekend.
Speaks really highly.
We have to rehire for this ski club program.
We, we had two people that we called in, and both were really, and Emily was just more of the person right now at this time. That's all I have for that.
Okay. So, between you folks and those that are zoomed in, is there anything that you wanted to bring up that we haven't already covered in our agenda tonight?
Jim and Jan, Matt, Pia, you going to stay quiet?
I'd like to bring up the fact that the wildlife management on River Road is proceeding pretty much on schedule. Sent Chad a message.
Yep, I got that, Matt. And by the way, I'd like to, I'd like to sit down and talk to you about that stuff, and we're also going to, I want to schedule you to be at the meeting with the group in about a week and a half.
So, I noticed the one dam is down by Groom's House.
Yeah, at Woolfield Road, yeah.
Woolfield Road. And then I come further towards town hall, it looks, the culprit is, is, is full, but it looks like the water's almost even to the road, getting closer to Kathy Gady's house.
That's the one where the rain?
Yeah. So, I just want to make sure that I understood this right, like, if you keep on releasing those upper ones, it's going to put more pressure on the main one down below? Where we're supposed to go from, we did that one there, but now we're going to go.
Well, the issue is, is you, basically, the, the dam sets the water level, so if you bring more water in, it's just going to, it's going to top it for a while, so it's not going to increase the volume.
So, the one that's like six feet off the road, or there's two that look like it's making the water equal to the road, we have permission to do those two, right?
Yes, they're, they're in the permit application that we've sent in, yes.
That wasn't convincing.
Oh, we got a permit. Is it the 22nd?
Yes, that's why I'm.
So, the 20, the 22nd is when we'll.
But when we'll note, when we have this, and we, they want, and we're going to be meeting with the streams and wetlands people out on site at that time.
Right, I mean, it just concerns me.
Right.
This water is almost equal to, or even to, the road. When we get a freeze, if someone tries to go off, that could be ice there, and they may even slide further, and, you know, we need to get this by the permit done. The 22nd is the meeting.
Yes.
Or not the 22nd, it's the meeting.
22nd is when we.
Is a 14-day period.
Yes.
Thank you. Dear God, what a mess. So, any, I think Jim, Jim had his hand up or took his.
Kid took it down.
Oh, me, no.
Jan.
Sounds good about the post office, that sounds like a real good plan.
Thank you.
Town there, that sounds like a real good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pia, you got anything to say? No, she rolled over.
Okay, we do have one thing for executive session.
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, Pia. Executive session for.
It was personnel.
Personnel for the DRB.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Otherwise, I don't have anything.